Good evening. It is Board of Selectmen meeting, November 5th, 2018, at a very dark 6:00 PM at the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being videotaped for cable and for YouTube. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I get a motion to sign Treasury War at 10 and payroll.
Motion.
Second.
That wasn't even a motion, Wayne.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have one set of meeting minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes of Monday, October 22nd, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Three to one. And we will jump in right away to 6:00 PM. Chief Knight, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Chief.
Tonight, on behalf of our town accountant and myself, I'm bringing forward our fiscal 2018 closeout of ambulance contractual allowances and ambulance write-offs. What you have before you tonight is for FY '18, amount for write-offs of $133,843.96. That encompasses seven years. It's not just for '18. That goes back several years. Contractual allowances in the amount of $519,779.89 for a total abatement of $653,623.85. Just so you know, in FY '18, ambulance calls, we billed out $1,016,280.55. We collected, brought into the town, $443,369.39, which was $65,000 more than what was projected. So that became part of the free cash this year.
So not even half? About half, you say?
Well, contractual allowance is not a true write-off. It's an adjustment to the bill. If we bill Medicare or Medicaid, we can't go after the difference. So if our ambulance bill is $1,000 and Medicaid pays $129, we don't write off. We adjust the bill. And that's what all this is, is basically things that I'm able to capture. The write-off is the true money that we truly could have collected, but we are writing off. And that's for several reasons, whether it's a death and the estate didn't pay, or it could be an out-of-state person that we can't track down, some of those type of situations.
Okay.
I just need a motion to have it signed, that's all.
Make a motion to sign the, what do we call on this? The ambulance abatement as presented by Chief Knight.
Second. And that's for fiscal 2018. Are there any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Just one thing. We did have the haunting on Main Street on Halloween. It was very, very successful. We had several hundred children that participated. I think a lot of parents dressed up as well. So it was a really good time. This year, we included the rec department. And some of the rec volunteers assisted with some of the children's games. They needed time for community service hours for schools. So we were able to accommodate some of that as well. This year will be our third year with the Santa deliveries. Sign-up sheet went live on Friday afternoon. And we're at just over 170 participants signed up already. So we close at 200. So if anyone's out there, hurry up.
Now that's some good work.
Yes. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are definitely very early for our 6:30 DPW interviews. So why don't we go straight to Mr. Reed?
Well, I think on the first item, carried over from the last meeting, but self-explanatory, two names have been forwarded to the town. We have interviews set up beginning at 6:30 with the first candidate to second candidate at 7:30. I did get in touch with Mr. Lynch. Bernie Lynch was handling the town administrator search. A profile has been completed of the town. They've begun the advertising. So that step has started with the town administrator search. And Bernie's indicated that he has already been in contact with the few individuals who are interested in the town administrator position. So that's moving along as well. On the special town meeting, I just have a couple of things I want to pass down for the board. Since the budget is going to be divided into two different articles on the warrant, and you have a copy of the latest warrant after your vote last week and the meeting with the Finance Committee, the reordering of the articles has been accommodated on the warrant. So this is the final version in the posted warrant. But the first page of the budget is basically a spreadsheet that Margaret had produced. And it shows those budgets that need to be supplemented from the cuts that were made at the annual town meeting last spring. So this is a pretty straightforward document. And I think what the Finance Committee wanted to have done with the very first article, which is for A, to adjust the budget. And then the second sheet is the result of discussions with the board for the additional add-ons to articles. Purchase of services for the selectmen, for fund a plan to move the Community Hall, over to Community Hall to anticipate using the Town Hall Annex for the regional dispatch, supplementing the town administrator salary, fund the recruitment. Police Department full-time wages in order to be able to fund the sergeant's contract that was negotiated after the town meeting. And then two items in Public Works, superintendent salary and the highway purchase services to fund that recruitment effort. And I've just added some notes down on the bottom. Total for the articles, A and B, your budget articles, total for all the other articles on the warrant, plus your policy of reserving $150,000 minus from your certified free cash. So that's your remaining balance going into the spring.
Bob, can we go back to what you just mentioned about the old library and the dispatch center? Are we asking for money being allotted for that already? What did you say about the dispatch?
Yeah. And you know what? I want to take a little bit of responsibility for this. So one of the things that we're doing here is, as you can see from the warrant, splitting it into A and B under Article IV. And one of the reasons we did that, and I think some of us were there, was that the FinCom prior to us setting the warrant had indicated that they really wanted us to keep pure that original municipal amount that had been cut back in May. So there was that. So we split everything else out. And obviously, on the warrant, it doesn't say the amount for B. And I realized sort of late in the game that we hadn't included everything. So a couple of things have been added, sort of 11th hour. Not that they affect the warrant itself, but it certainly is going to be something to talk about on the floor when we get to B. So we have had discussions about the two adjustments to salary for the two department heads, the two executive search costs, the sergeant contract adjustments, which all of this stuff hadn't come up in May. We wouldn't have known about it. But the last thing was an amount of money to keep us moving forward for dispatch, whether or not it moves. And that's going to require a little bit of study money. If we don't do that now, we are behind the eight ball when it comes to a timeframe. Because should they decide to move, say, to the Annex, for example, our departments would have to be out of the Annex before they can ever start. And with Warren having started this past week, the clock is starting to tick on that.
Well, how much study money are we talking about?
$15,000.
Okay.
And I think that that was recommended, I mean, I think that that's, if my understanding is correct, is kind of to bring Community Hall pot up to improvements anyway. Is that...
No, it says fund a plan for the Town Hall Annex, move to Community Hall.
Yeah. There are, I think everybody knows that there are issues with Community Hall. I think that, you know, the scope of the money will be somewhat limited to prepare for the move and to make both the bottom floor, where I understand the inspection services are going to go on the top floor of the building where selectmen planning, town administrator will go, just to accommodate those moves. I think that, you know, obviously, there's a larger plan if you want to address everything over at Community Hall. But I think this is strictly for that move.
Correct me if I'm wrong. We haven't approved the moving into the Annex.
We haven't officially done anything. And this is going to help us answer that question. Because we keep talking about sort of the same things and circling around them, but we don't know how much it's going to cost to do Community Hall if we do it. We need to ensure that if we do anything over there, it doesn't become good money spent that ends up getting destroyed if a larger project ends up happening within five or seven years, which is a possibility. So there's a lot of questions to be answered that will require a professional to answer them, which is how much would it cost to do this? I don't think we can make that decision, to your point, until we have a number.
So like a layperson doesn't look at this, oh, okay, they're going to be moving dispatch over to the Annex. And you know, this is not an endorsement or an approval that we okayed that project.
No, this is due diligence. And I think the perfect example is exactly what we don't want to happen again that happened with the primary building, where we sank a lot of money in the building.
Yeah, and then you kind of need it.
Before doing feasibility study, before doing any architecturals, and then realize we ran over our heads.
Didn't we do this a few years back?
We didn't spend this kind of money, no.
Listen, Gary, I have a set of plans.
There is a full set of plans for Community Hall, but they're pretty old. We pulled those, right, Abby? What was the date on those?
I think those were '01. And...
That far back?
Yeah. And I think those were plans for like total renovation and an addition, at least the ones that I saw were. So that's a much, much broader scope. And that's what I was referring to with the larger issues that you have at Community Hall. I think those were plans to address everything.
And it's possible that a professional might tell us it's not worth doing anything without doing everything. I suppose that's a possibility.
Or take some of the plans that you paid for in 2001 and maybe find a use for that, knock the price down.
Well, there are several firms out there that do this. Since this isn't an article, the money will have to be spent by June 30th. But I think considering all of your timelines, you'd want to have it spent by then anyway. I think, you know, time has become of the essence to move forward on this.
All right. I'm okay with it.
So just to be fully transparent, the FinCom's preference would have been, and this was, it was too late. We had set the articles as they were, would have been to pull it out even more than we did. Bob's first thought was to make Article IV one article with all the budget changes. Describe it on the floor. These are the things that are making whole May's budget. These are the things that are new from July went on. We didn't do that. 4B obviously encompasses several things. And I think FinCom truly would have loved to have seen us have five or six articles instead of a 4B. And their comment was, and we should know this, that whether or not we go to great lengths to describe it on the floor and provide that breakout, and of course, people can amend from the floor for whatever the total of our motion is, it's a little bit more complicated than taking a single article and saying, well, I don't want to spend $15,000. I don't want to spend $3,500. I don't want to spend... So it's just something to prepare for when we start answering questions that night.
I think every town has its own way of doing things. In other communities I've worked, and this would all be one article. But Rutland has its way of doing things. And I think to compromise and accommodate everyone, this is the compromise that was arrived at. And that's why you've got two different budgets for two different articles.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
On the next item, the roof bids, you have the contract in front of you. Gary and I have discussed the submittal. Other issues, bonds, insurance, were covered under supplemental conditions. So if you approve the contract, which has been drawn up by council, you'll see on the signature page, it hasn't yet been signed by council, but that is from KP. Then we'll be able to, along with the signed contract, issue a notice to proceed to the contractor so that they'd be able to begin.
So do you need from us a motion to sign to approve?
To approve the contract, yeah. That would be responsibility of the board.
You're comfortable with this, Bob?
Yes.
It's just two, it's going to be two buildings?
Yes. The, as you know, the low bid was right on the money with the appropriation. So we'll have to pay close attention to this process, make sure there are no change orders, et cetera.
Abby, can we reach out to the library trustees and ask if they have somebody in mind that might be a clerk of the works, somebody available, that could work with the building department? DPW, because we don't have the manpower to keep somebody here all the time. Maybe they know somebody who's involved with the library.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the contract for the roof bids.
The company is WPI.
From WPI Construction, Inc. And these are for the library roof and the public safety building roof.
The council's approved it. They just haven't signed it.
Correct. In the interest of time, we brought it to the selectmen's meeting and, you know, can let the builder know that it's been approved and the contractor know that it's been approved, that we can get counsel as well as the accountant's signature. We wanted to keep the process moving and not do that first before, you know, wait for another selectmen's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Bob, who's signing this? You? Me?
I think you would.
Him? Okay. Not the clerk?
I think it would be the chair. I mean, you have a policy on contracts.
We do.
If it's over $10,000, it's the Board of Selectmen's.
Thank you very much. I'm going to jump right in. We'll keep going as far as we can. So you have a Watchus at Earth Day agreement. There is a regional meeting, is it this week? No, it's next week, in West Boylston. I've been the municipal representative to Watchus at Earth Day for some time, but the meeting is open. Anyone is welcome to go. It's at 8 o'clock out at the West Boylston offices. Excuse me. In any case, we seem to have hit just a gap in where we had an updated contract that went through, I want to say 2016 or 15, right, Abby? You pulled, we pulled it. Oh, no, Colleen sent it to us. That's the original. But then we got sent the more updated one, which was from, let's see, signed in 2015. There was a gap at that point because Earth Day had a change, a significant change in their board. And I think they never sent us the updated one. So now, in advance of the regional meeting next week, they wanted to get everybody up to date. So this is that agreement that joins the, I think we're up to seven communities that are all member towns.
You're okay with that, Sheila?
I am. Yeah. This is really just a continuation of our relationship with them.
Were there any significant changes? There weren't, were there?
I didn't see any. Did you compare the two very closely? It looked to me like the same document.
Okay. I just knew with the changes on their end, if there was any significant changes.
No. Good question.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
A motion to approve the agreement by and among the Watchus at Towns and Watchus at Earth Day as presented to us.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Great. Thank you. Next, we mentioned this, we were talking about this briefly before we started the meeting. But this Thursday at 6:30 at the Holden Senior Center will be the Budget Roundtable with all five communities and the Watchus District. If anyone has anything they would like to share at that meeting, we should work that out. Is there anything in particular that we want to focus on?
I just, was there any follow-up update with the letter that was kind of put together from the previous roundtable with the towns and not the school committee and the district?
I'm sure that's going to be a topic of conversation Thursday. I haven't seen a final letter. I think that it wasn't just Rutland, but also Paxton. I know the Finance Committee in Princeton had an issue with the 3.5. So I don't know how it's going to be presented. Certainly, the initial wording was that there was a consensus around 3.5. That's not the case. So I think, it's still being crafted, as they say.
Okay. So I was going to say, to the best of your knowledge, there was no letter that was actually sent out prior to this roundtable. So...
No. In fact, I'd heard there was some sentiment from Holden that there might have to be two different letters. That for some reason, there seems to be a fixation on a 3.5%. I don't know why. I don't know why. Maybe it'll come up again at the meeting so that there can be some consensus around some number.
They must be richer. They must have more money. I'm apt to stay with the 2% as you argued. What do we feel on that?
Well, 2.5. But it'll be interesting to see what happens Thursday. We know, you know, based on what's been reported, that they're going to be introducing the idea of full-day kindergarten to us. The first year of full-day kindergarten is not funded by the state. You have to find funding for that. So that's something they're going to have to work into their budget. It'll be interesting to see if regional transportation comes up because, as we know, it got dropped from the supplemental budget. Why wouldn't it? After the issues that Watchus had had and the amount of money that they're going to have to repay after the fiasco with the mile-and-a-half radius and attempting reimbursement on that. It's amazing to think, you know, the fighting that happened at our May town meeting over what we wanted, $84,000, which they got. And now, without blinking, have enough money within their budget to absorb a quarter of a million dollar bill that has to go back to the state. So I really certainly can't blame the legislature for dropping that as a ball to run with because, you know, how do you reward that? So it'll be interesting to see if that comes up. I think on a smaller scale, the other thing that I feel like we heard might come up is a different attempt to fund the high school field, which might be asking the town for 50%.
The $600,000 for the...
Right. I think, what was our, I think our portion was supposed to be 125. Yeah.
What's your position on that? What, the towns are going to put 50? They're going to come up with the other 50%?
I think it's really unfortunate that the high school, that we didn't see more attempts to get the money, whether it was through sponsorships or through their boosters. That's a school of 2,500 kids. That said, this is clearly a capital expense. I do think that the argument that they've made and the research that they did into replacing it is correct. It has served its useful life. They've kept it going as long as they could. They are pushing the limit when it comes to how much padding it has underneath. We know all those things are true. It's just that the money, you know, last year, they came to us with very little. So we'll have to see if they've come up with more information or...
I guess my point is, what's their capital plan? Like, this is known to have a lifespan of X number of years. So why was there not any proactive, or was there, like, proactiveness to keep something going towards that repair that's obviously going to come up in 10 or 15 years?
What's the lifespan of dirt?
I think we're well beyond the idea of a natural field, unfortunately. So we're on, I want to say, year 12. Does that sound right? I feel like you were there one of the nights, but I think we're on year 12 of what was, or maybe longer, of what was supposed to be a 10-year lifespan on these fields. So, yeah, they're expensive. But if you talk to some of the people who do grounds supposedly, and of course, we're seeing it in our own town, maintaining the natural fields might actually cost more in the long run. So it's difficult.
And you're at the mercy of the weather a lot more.
Complete the mercy of the weather, yeah.
Is there any additional talk on the district providing a more comprehensive balance or line item budget?
Nope. We'll see if that comes up Thursday.
Because I thought that that was on...
That should be at the table for the roundtable.
I agree.
I mean, I think that that's an important, I think, I think we as a town are kind of on that board. I mean, I don't want to speak for all four of you.
No, I agree. So what other expense items might they be looking for Rutland's position on? I know, kind of caught us by surprise with the 3.5%. You threw the two out there, which is good because I support that. What else do you foresee that maybe we should discuss ahead of time so that you know what the board is thinking? So we got the field, you got the percentage.
Yeah. The field would be separate. I mean, I think even when we had talked about doing it, and that was before hearing that some of the towns simply weren't even going to consider it. It was going to be a capital exclusion for one year. It is fairly short money. They're in, I want to say, year two or three of their five-year tech plan. Clearly, they're also in, they've done some reorganizing and hiring within the central office. So for example, right now, they have the person who used to be in charge of guidance at the high school who is doing double duty and has a title that has something to do with social emotional wellness. They hired a couple of more counselors. I'm sure they're going to be reporting on that and letting us know whether they want more money for that. You know, they had a lot of things on their wish lists. But it's, I think what we first need to hear is what their base budget needs to be based on contractual obligations. I mean, to a certain extent, they do have a budget that's very much like ours, which is, there's not that much room when you start talking about fixed costs and health insurance. Health insurance, I will say, for me, it continues to be an issue. They continue to be, although this past year was better, and the year before that was slightly better. But they continue to be in the risk pool, and it's a problem. They had a gold-plated plan. They've gradually been able to pull it back during each negotiation. We are not in a negotiation year this year for any of the school contracts. But it still stands that their retirees and their spouses of their retirees are killing the district when it comes to health insurance costs.
OPEB, yeah.
No, not OPEB, actual health insurance costs. So we pay for our retirees that 75-25 split. The district is not. They're paying 50-50, and it's killing them. And it's to a point where, and you'll see this if you go in January to the MMA conference and you meet with the vendors for the different health insurance companies. A district that big should be a whale. It should be a client that everybody wants. And they are not because they've had catastrophic illness and injury over and over and over. And of course, the population is aging. So the longer they keep going with the policy that they've got when it comes to retirees and the health insurance plan, the harder it's going to be.
Not only that, but isn't there, where is it? The PEC?
Oh, the PEC.
Haven't they burned bridges in the past few years?
I don't know about burning bridges. So that's probably too long in conversation, but the PEC, do you know? Long story short, there, yeah, long story short, there is a group that, what's the right word for this? They represent every single union. And what it means is that every single union, when it comes to certain items under their contracts, need to be treated absolutely the same, sort of live by the sword, die by the sword, all is one. All for one, one for all. That's probably the best way to say it. Here's the problem. We are the only district in the state in a situation where we have a PEC that will only dissolve if it self-dissolves. It has no reason to self-dissolve. We've had legal looking into it. To me, it seems to be legislative action or the union members that belong to the PEC voluntarily, oh, it's a mess, voluntarily agree to dissolve the PEC for the right reasons. That being, being able to negotiate for the retirees on a more competitive rate that goes along with the private sector.
Basically, they're unions, sorry.
Well, you know, the teachers' union, I get it. Every teacher and all of us look and say, one day I will be a retiree. Why would I do this? But in the long run, it is hurting the active employees. You can't give the increases that these employees want and deserve in some cases if all of your money is going to health insurance. So self-fulfilling prophecy. I wish that they would take the high road, but they haven't yet.
Interesting.
It's because the unions control all the health insurance decisions.
Good talk. Okay. So we've just hit 6:30, and very exciting as we move forward tonight. We obviously have had MRI doing our initial search for us when it comes to replacing our DPW superintendent, Gary, who is actually away this week with Team Rubicon, doing public service, community service down in North Carolina this week, which is fantastic, but it means he can't be here. And we have our first candidate at 6:30, who I think must be here. The only person who was willing to come tonight. Hi. Come on up.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity, I really do.
Now, who do we have?
My name is Todd Melanson.
All right, okay, great. Just a second to get organized here.
I'm sorry. Do I? I'm on the chair. Just as a reminder, we're recorded for public, um, television, so just...
Understood.
Sorry, we're getting our white papers out here. Why don't you start by telling us about yourself?
Okay, um, Todd Melanson, born, raised in Massachusetts. Graduated from North Adam State, worked in water labs for about eighteen years. Really got tired of having a bacteria or an instrument determining whether I had a bad day or a good day. I also was twelve years in the service, so I was, uh, two years regular, uh, ten years, ten years in the Mass National Guard. Maybe I'm an odd duck, um, but in talking to a lot of my friends that have been in service longer than I am, the biggest thing I found I'd lost in the private sector was that service. That, um, I really do like helping something bigger than myself. I, I'm not gonna deny I don't mind making a living and being able to support my family, but there has to be a purpose to it, and I kinda lost that. Um, one of the labs I worked in, the last lab I worked in, um, we dealt with a lot of the communities, but we also dealt with a lot of residences with private wells. And one of the biggest joys I got out of that was helping someone, taking in their information, trying to figure out what goes wrong. Kinda goes with my brain, I like fitting things together. Uh, my job in the military was a military and military intelligence analyst. I was the senior, by the time I got out, I was the senior intel, um, NCO for a cavalry squadron. Um, so, we were a core asset, I got to do a lot, look at a lot of neat stuff, do a lot of things, but the bigger thing was looking at a problem, trying to take little pieces and then try and figure it out. Um, and kinda what I did there. Chelmsford Water District opened a position called Environmental Compliance Manager. Um, I applied for it, and, and they hired me. I handle pretty much all the regulatory, um, compliance issues with state and EPA. And that was one of the reasons, being an intel person and an NCO, I can read government regulations and somewhat make sense of them. But, especially in water, the regulations are changing so quickly and so dramatically. The super was beyond the superintendent, it's beyond most superintendents to be able to keep up with. Um, and so that kinda got handed to me, my analytical experience was a bonus on that. Um, I, my ability to talk to the community, um, they handed over water quality complaints to me very, very happily, um, but that was part of the thing. Chelmsford is over a hundred years old. A lot of original main, or some of its original main. Treatment plants only came online in early two thousand. Um, it's all groundwater, not your surface water in the mixture of, um, ground. But the iron content they deal with is as high as ten parts, uh, manganese as high as one part. Treatment plants remove all that, but they've got, like, sixty, seventy, eighty years' worth of iron and manganese built up in the pipes, so there's a lot of discoloration issues, depending where you are in town. It is getting better from flushing and things like that, but being able to talk to a resident, going and visiting them and talking to them in their house, um, became something that I spend, spent, or spend a lot of time doing. But being able to make them feel comfortable with the water, being able to explain what the heck is going on, what they can do to remediate, and things like that. I'm kind of a jack-of-all-trades, I got, I got pretty much got all the jobs nobody else wanted to do. Um, I've rewritten the emergency management plan and updated it. Uh, let's see, a couple of things I'm really proud of. I have a background in solar, my father was the very first vice president of the very first solar company in the United States. So, I spent my teenage years working at the plant with him, um, but I got to understand solar and the advances it made. I helped the district, uh, the American Rebuilding Recovery Act, when I came into play. We had been already looking at building our own. Um, we actually were not on the IEP list. Um, I put together a presentation, we went to the State House. Uh, Chelmsford's an odd duck, it has four state reps, um, for one community and one state senator. Um, we actually won them over, we actually got put on the I, IEP list. And at the time it was built, it was the first municipally-owned, uh, solar, right, ground mount and the lodges at the time. Uh, Pittsfield went online two months later and killed us in the size of it, but it was something that we were proud of. Um, and it's been highly successful, it saved a lot of money, um, we save on average about two hundred thousand dollars a year with it. But it was looking at that, looking at, at the time, energy costs were highly fluctuating and were expensive, and we were looking at ways. All our plants were brand-new, so we weren't gonna get any advantage by, uh, changing a VFD or, or a pump head. Um, so that was one of the ways we did it. I guess the things that you should know about me is, one, I really and truly am passionate about what I do. I won't do something if I'm not gonna, I, I did that once, I will never do that again. But the other thing is, is I have ability to communicate, um, I can, um, put together a network. I'm gonna be the first to tell you, I won't ever know everything about everything of my, my job. Um, I fully realize that. You can be confident in what you do, in your abilities, and still not have an ego. Um, I am not afraid to ask a question if I don't know the answer to it. Um, there is no such thing as a stupid question. Also, I'm flexible. If you go in, anyone who's got any service, and I, I will apologize upfront. A lot of my, the way I became who I am has to do with my time in the service, um, being an NCO. You, you can have the best-laid plans, and you can be as far-seeing as you wanna be. The minute that plan hits reality, you need to be able to be flexible and change with it. And I, I am, I can do that and do it very well. Um, my ability to communicate with the public is really, really, um, a strength of mine. I have talked at border selectance meetings, I've talked at the State House. I've talked to elderly organizations in Chelmsford about water conservation, um, about sustainability. I've taught classes, uh, at the high school, I've taught with the teacher, uh, AP ecology, uh, biology and chemistry, talking about, um, sustainability and things like that. But what the teachers liked about me is it made them think, kids hated it, but it wasn't just to get up and give a presentation. Um, I, I think, one of the things I, I try and bring to anything is, um, information, the more that people have. I read your CCR, you guys do an exten, outstanding job with water conservation. You have a residential per capita of forty-three gallons per person per day, the standard is sixty-five. That takes a little bit of, of, um, work to get a residential population to do that, and that's outstanding. For us, I guess my thing was, is I need, one of the things when I started, ours was extremely high. Um, we weren't meeting the standard, we weren't meeting it for unaccounted-for water, and we weren't meeting it for residential per capita. It required, on anything you're gonna do, whether it be with your staff or with a residential, you need buy-in. You can have the best plan, you can be as organized as you wanna be. If you don't get the buy-in of the people below you, you're not gonna succeed, you're gonna fail, straight out. Um, and so, with the population, I had to do that, and with the staff. When they hired me, um, the people that were involved were the, uh, border water commissioners and the superintendent, and the lead engineer for the engineering firm that, um, the district had. I got hired and was put on the same level as the distribution manager and the water quality manager, who've been there either thirty or twenty-six years, between the two, each of them. Um, I had to get their buy-in and trust, and that took a little bit of, um, again, I was always taught, to get respect, you have to give it, and not be afraid to, to listen and, and take that criticism or, or suggestion. Didn't mean I had to agree with it, but you had to listen to it and be honest about your opinions with it, and I, I, it took a little bit of time. Um, but I was able to gain both those gentlemen's, um, if not confidence, respect, professionally, which to me is probably one of the biggest things I'm, I'm most proud of in, in what I've done there. During the interview with MRI, the first question that really kinda threw me for a loop, and, um, the gentleman from MRI asked it, he said, "What do, why do you think you can do this job?" And it kinda threw me, 'cause I was ready for all the, the technical questions, you know, what, you know, what type of person are you? And I, I really kinda stumbled, and I said, "I wasn't expecting that." And then, going back and thinking about it, my first answer, I felt, was too arrogant. I said, "I wouldn't have applied if I didn't think I could do it." Uh, who applies for a job just to apply for a job? But in thinking about it, um, my position has prepared me for a job like this. Um, I sit on a couple of committees for New England Water Works, uh, primary one being the, uh, water resources. And the biggest talk about it, about water resources, is it being holistic, that you tie it into drinking water, wastewater, stormwater. And I think a DBW director, um, fits that mold, because you have to fit all those, and they all tie together. Highway is actually tied into it. Um, some of the stuff that you're looking at now, um, I don't know if they use it or not, but the brine solutions, their salt concentrations were allowed to be raised. The only problem with that is you have to increase, um, the anti-corrosion, anti-corrosion agents with them. What they don't mention is certain of the byproducts of those anti-corrosion agents are ammonia and phospho, phosphorus, which sequester in the snow and come out in the spring. You have a surface water treatment plant, um, biggest problem, most surface waters are starting to fade, are algae blooms in the cyanotoxins. Uh, for me, it concerns me, 'cause my wells for Chelmsford are shallow wells, they're forty-five to fifty-five deep, feet deep. Uh, those cyanotoxins have become mobile now in the underground aquifer, and the treatment systems are very specific, and mine don't meet, would not meet the criteria, so we're actually starting to look at that. Uh, drought management, for us, the drought of twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen was significant. Um, we went to complete outdoor water ban. Um, ours is a little different than most of the state, um, it's one we operate quite regularly. Um, instead of nine to five, ours is odd-even days, uh, six to nine in the morning, or six to nine at night on a level one. There's a level two where it's just six to five at night, six to nine at night, um, odd-even days, and then none. The community, actually, you can see the response, they've become accustomed to it. Um, but part of that was communication with them, we maintain, uh, a weather station, uh, we post the, um, precipitation, we convert the snow and rain and all that, other sort of stuff. So, when you tell them something, uh, that's the biggest thing. You'll never get them to, most of them, to completely like the idea of what you're doing. If you're telling them something or that they have to do, they're never really going to like it. But if you give them the information of why you're doing it, um, you, they still won't like it, but you'll get better compliance. I went on your CCR, had all the pertinent information, all the required information. Um, but your jobs could, the jobs could get made a little bit easier if you just kinda fleshed it out a little bit, made it, tell them how long you've been in, in business, tell them, um, go into a little bit more in-depth of how the water gets treated, how much water actually gets pumped and things like that. Go into, or even mention what your permitted and registered volumes are, 'cause that will tell them where they are in their limits and stuff like that. And especially with the business leaders, that number, the re, the registered volume, pertinent volume, when you get close to those and you start talking about redevelopment, um, they pay a lot of attention to that. Chelmsford lost a lot of businesses, Tullow, Bedford, some of the bigger communities, because their industrial corridor was designed in the sixties and seventies. All these other places have these beautiful, um, setups where they have the restaurants and everyone can go, and Chelmsford really doesn't have that, and they're redeveloping that. Um, I started to become an expert in how much a brewery would actually, a microbrewery and restaurant, how much water they'd actually use, because on that side of it, I have certain regulatory limits that I need to start planning, if I need, we need extra wells, or if we have to go to the state for more volume and things like that. One of the other things that I've been asked to be in Chelmsford is, has anyone heard of the MVP program? The state, Mass Vulnerability Preparedness Planning Program. If you haven't, I would sincerely encourage you to do so. Financially, um, what's gonna happen, but it's a two-stage process, and we're in the first stage. The planning process, you apply, you get the grant for the planning. Um, you get approved as an MVP-certified community. What that does is it gives you priority to the environmental bond bills. This year's environmental bond bill was three hundred million dollars. Regardless of your physical need, your infrastructure need, if you're not MVP-certified, they won't consider you until those people have already been satisfied. Reason being is, is they have the plans in place, that's the planning part. You come up with what your needs are, you come up with very specific plans. The reason being is, the money they give you in one year, if you already have the plan, it will be spent by the end of the year.
How much did you get?
Uh, we're only in the planning stages yet, so we have to get certified, so we're doing that. So, I represent the, there's three separate water districts, um, and I was asked to kinda represent their, their, coordinate and represent what their needs and worries are. If you look at the mass vulnerability, um, map, the new map, it kinda widens out floodplains, um, affected communities or affected areas. Um, my wells are all near where, where water are, so they'd all be underwater, so you're looking at things. But it's not specific to, like, climate change, um, or things like that, you can use it for education. You can use it for infrastructure, you can use it to plan to replace, one of the things I saw, at least on the water side, was your unaccounted-for water is fairly high, and it's above, it's above the, um, so there's a rule called the sixty-five-ten rule. Sixty-five is the residential per capita, gallons per person per day that you're supposed to be below. Ten is the unaccounted-for, that's the non-revenue water. And I think the latest year, you were at fifteen percent, but you've been as high as thirty percent. Now, that's water that you've paid to have treated and lost. And the number isn't as outrageous as it sounds statewide, there are communities that bat, battle with that. But you can kinda, uh, tie in two different sets. Do a main, if you find you have a section of main, you can prove that that leaks a lot, you can replace it. That's what happened when you replaced the main, you gotta replace the road, you could tie those in together. Um, it's a way to kinda, and the neat thing about it, the environmental bond bills are not matching. Might have to match it with staff time, but not monetarily.
So, Todd, we have, um, ten questions to try to get through.
Not a problem.
But I wanna keep this casual, and I, if people have questions based on everything you just told us, we should probably do the questions and not save them until the end, does that make sense? 'Cause I think we'd lose track, so I mean, I, I started making a list of questions, and even then, we won't. How many households have you visited in Chelmsford? You made it sound as if you've been doing a lot of door-to-door stuff, and how many households are there in Chelmsford that are on water?
Right, so the Chelmsford Water District, which is the largest, we supply eighty percent of the water. Uh, thirty-two thousand people, eighty-six hundred connections.
Eighty-six hundred, how many houses do you think you've visited? And, and you've been there a long, a long time.
I've been there eleven years, I'm going on twelve. Uh, a lot?
A lot.
Uh, there's no way that, um, we, when I started there, one of the things we did to start the unaccounted-for, um, we have installed irrigation systems. We did a, we needed to verify the, uh, water concentration devices, the rain sensor and stuff like that. Um, but the big thing was to check and make sure they had backflow preventers that were proper. But I got in and talked to the community, so we started and I probably, we went from having two hundred and eighty registered irrigation systems to now we're at thirty-two hundred.
Thirty-two hundred, how much INI from when you started, what do you have now? What's the percentage difference?
INI, uh, so, that's the wastewater side, um, the INI, they do, I think they do it twice a year. So, they do a hundred percent of their system every year.
They do a hundred percent of their system every year, how many miles?
For the wastewater, I don't know that number.
How many miles of the water?
Water main, we have two hundred miles of water main, and we do a hundred percent leak detection every year.
Cameras?
Uh, the leak, the, the INI, yes. The INI, yes. The leak detection, no. We have a guy comes in and, so leak detection on the water is different. So INI, you're looking for intrusion.
Right.
Drinking water, you're looking for a water leak. And so we went from an unaccounted for, we had twenty-nine percent. We've been as low as five-point-nine. We've been below ten for seven straight years.
How many wells are there?
Twenty.
And they're all?
Treated.
Treated?
Yep. We have three treatment plants, two full-time, one regular. We have five storage tanks, fifteen-point-three million, three booster stations, fifteen-hundred hydrants.
And the town is fully on water? Or are there still some private wells? Maybe a handful?
Four or five.
Okay. Yeah, that was a lot. I don't know, I don't know how many of our questions we're gonna get through, but we can jump around. Should we, so why don't you, you told us a little bit about this. The first question is, tell us why you're interested in Rutland and why you feel you're ready for the challenge. But could you focus on Rutland for a second?
Yes, sir.
Why, why Rutland?
I'm from, I grew up in Borica, but not the Borica that's today. There were twenty-three active farms. When I was looking to raise my family, we moved to Townsend. I like the, Chelmsford isn't a city, but it is very developed. I like the ability to be able to know the people that you're working for. There's no way I'm gonna know every community member in Chelmsford. Probably not in Rutland either, but I would have a better person-to-person. And I like, and it's not that bigger communities don't have that pride. The smaller, I live in Townsend. The people in the town that I raised my kids in have an inordinate amount of pride in their community. And you see that time and time again, especially, especially outside of four-ninety-five and the smaller communities. There's just that, it just grabs them in hold. How many people are multiple generations that live in the same community? Their kids grew up there, they end up doing that. And part of the idea of the public works is to make that affordable and sustainable. There are always gonna be costs. If you can explain them, you'll get, like I said, the buy-in. But I really like to see communities like this. It kind of got my eyes open during the redevelopment of Route one-twenty-nine in Chelmsford. What water and sewer and public works can do to make a community sustainable and take it well into the next, not century, but bring it and keep, I'm gonna lose the words. But no, but keep the traditions they have now. But make the community sustainable in the long term.
I, I want to encourage the board again to just sort of jump in if you, you know.
I really like what I do and I talk way too much, so if I need.
I'm gonna jump around a little bit because you've, you've hit on so many things. I want to make sure we hit on the things that are important here too. This is gonna sound random, but I'm jumping right in. What do you feel is the best use of chapter ninety funds?
For the health and roads, I would, and what's coming up from the EPA, I would start looking at maintaining your culverts, looking at what your bridge and basements are. The culverts are gonna, the way you direct the water that comes in is gonna be more to the maintenance of your roads. You're gonna find a lot of communities don't maintain their culverts and they start to wash out. We got a, less than that, we lost eighteen-foot section of twelve-inch water main was directly off our treatment plant. Because we didn't, they didn't maintain the culvert, the water went in, washed out, and took that whole section of road out and fell on the pipe. So by taking the time and actually maintaining the culverts in better weather, we probably could have avoided the cost of what that, what that damage did.
So you've had input in roads relative to water, the water pipes?
When our pipes are, where our pipes, our pipes are in the road.
Yeah. So what is your experience in being involved in pavement management planning? Do you get, do you get invited into that process? What happens when it's winter, winter operations and something's going on and we're talking about freezing and thawing and?
So a district is different. We're separate from the town government. We operate solely off of water receipts that we come in. And we operate our own elected board. We're a other municipal entity. We have input, no, we do plow, we do plow our own facilities, which are quite widespread. We're the largest landowner in the town of Chelmsford. I'll be honest with you, it's probably one of my biggest weaknesses. But I'll bring back my ability to network. I don't know everything about water. I have a network of friends that are DPW directors, superintendents, who have been a great asset. If you're not afraid to ask a question of somebody or advise of somebody, then you can get information through. You also, in looking at what you've done in that regard, you have an incredible staff. You've got people that care about their community, that work awfully hard at doing it. So where I'm technically sound on water, wastewater and storm water, I would probably rely heavily on the people that you already do have and the people that I know. I've found that I've been, been able to make up in any lack of experience in areas that I don't have by taking advantage of that.
How many people do you manage now?
I kind of cross over between water, the distribution system and the treatment system. So we have twenty-five full-time employees. I don't really direct them unless it's a quarter, I'm kind of a floater. So there'll be two of us that direct things, the superintendents above us. But we have twenty-five full-time employees.
And how many, how many would you say directly report to you?
Well, when I was in the service, I managed the entire S-two section, the enlisted side of it. And I had twenty-five soldiers underneath me, very differing MMOSs. One of the things that's unique about the military is you're not just doing their work. You're organizing and caring about their day-to-day living, where they live and things like that. So there's a lot more scope to that, that I think has prepared me well for managing large groups of people. Your, your staff is union. Where I don't come from a union shop, I actually think the union shop might fit me a little bit better. What is required, what is expected, is all down in the contract. You can ask for something, they don't necessarily have to give it, but you already have a set playground. You have rules, rules, lines that, you know, that have to be done, that, there's expectations already set. You're not putting unnecessary expectations on someone. So fitting into a framework like that, I see myself fitting very well.
Do you have higher fire authority now, when you're current position?
Yeah, but it all comes down to the board and the superintendent. I have input in on it and stuff like that. It's never come up, I'll be honest with you. The district staff is pretty much all Chelmsford. I think I'm the only one who's not from Chelmsford. I haven't met your staff. But our staff, I've never seen a more dedicated staff to their, their town and their profession. And it's something I'm extremely proud to be part of and stuff like that. But I don't know how much I would have, I would have input on it if it was required, but it's never come up, so.
Talking about management, we'll just segue a little bit. Can you talk to us about your budget experience? How would you go about, and let's move forward. How would you go about building a budget for us? Because unlike your current position, you're looking at far more than just water here. We do have water enterprise, sewer enterprise, but we have a full DPW budget as well. So how do you see yourself building a budget and then managing it and maintaining it over the course of a fiscal year?
You're gonna have your notes, you're gonna have, I would go through the notes. Do you, let me ask some questions of you. Do you belong to the chemical consortium? Where you buy your chemicals and treatments?
No, we, we go off the bid list, the state bid list for our chemicals.
Okay. Even if you don't hire me, I would sincerely respectfully advise you to look into it. It's all water, wastewater, and they go in as a large group. I think there's two-hundred entities in it. And they get bids that beat the state bid by a bunch. And it's specific to those type of chemicals. You're gonna have your labor costs, you're gonna know those. I'd wanted to start and take a look at your energy, your energy bills. Start looking at those, reviewing those. So you take your notes. Do you have a five-year, ten-year, twenty-year capital plan for water, wastewater? Okay. Then let me read, let me take a step back. First thing I would do is kind of organize an immediate capital plan, where you are, what you're going to need. Nothing is worse than going back to the community for money after you've already set a budget and it's needed to change. See what your regulatory requirements are, if you have any violations. Really couldn't find any current violations on the DEP webpage. There is a portal that lists on everything, because I know, because people call me up and say, "Why did we get this notice?" So my first thing would be to build a capital plan for the DPW. Probably I would call in the DPW, the different department heads. Let me know where they are in their infrastructure, their vehicles, their treatment. How old's your treatment plant? What condition is in? What are the, what are you looking at for maintenance? When was the last time you did storage tank maintenance? And then try and prioritize. Which one has to deal with health and safety? Which one is more needing?
Have you been involved in building your budget?
Yep.
And do you have to present it at town meeting? Actually, what does Chelmsford do?
We're a district, so.
You're a district, you don't have to do anything.
We have our annual meeting, we have our, we have our monthly meetings. We have our elections and we have our annual meeting.
And so nobody from the water district attends the town side?
No, we do.
You do?
Our district does, the others don't. But we do give a presentation. I've actually built the presentation. And it goes over everything we've done. It explains any rate increases. One of the biggest things you can do, so everyone associates their water bill with their monthly bills. Water bills, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, but it's a quarterly bill. So the biggest thing we did was break down the bill into monthly. And it came out to be thirty-eight dollars a month. And so we asked them, "Do you have a cell phone bill? What's your cable bill?" Water is the only thing that makes a house uninhabitable by the Board of Health regs. So there's that sort of stuff. But going, I'm kind of reentering.
Well, is it all right?
Yep, nope, nope.
I want to move off water.
Yes, ma'am.
You ready?
I'm trying, I'm trying.
I know. Let's talk about a snow and ice season. If we were to hire you, you're coming right smack dab. And I'm gonna tell you right now that the weather here in Rutland, we have the highest town center east of the Berkshires, is very different from the weather in Chelmsford.
Yep.
Yeah. What are you gonna do?
Well, you already have good highway people, but there's some things you can do. Who maintains the hydrants? Is fire doing it or is water in charge of it, digging up the hydrants?
Digging out the hydrants? It's, it's a.
DPW does it.
Have you adopted, have you, adopt the hydro? That's what we, it's a free program that you can set up.
Okay.
Citizens volunteer to do it.
We do ask that people try to do the hydrants, but there's not a, there's nothing official?
No, but here's the thing, adopt the hydrants, a map.
Okay.
Free map, they set it up. Hydrant's red, it's not adopted. If it's green, it's adopted. People start to see the neighborhoods with red and green and it sort of becomes, not a competition, but they're like, well, they're doing it. And we use it to prioritize. We're responsible for, I think, sixteen, fifteen-hundred hydrants. There is it a red? Where are your most travel routes? Where you have main, main drag for leaving, like Townsend has two main roads. One goes north and south, one goes east and west. But they're state. Now, I guess that would be my first question. Are there state, state rural highways, the state plows for you?
Main Street, one-twenty-two A is a state.
Okay, so you have all the, do you private contract any of it or is it all DPW?
We prefer not to, but sometimes we do.
Okay. Do you, how often do you have to do snow removal where the snowbank piles up too much and you have to?
It depends on the winter. I mean, we have very few locations that can't handle a snow load. They'll come through, and I apologize, I don't know the term. There's a term for when we widen out our roads well after a snowstorm is finished. We'll come back a week later and really push the snow over. But it's not like Chelmsford where we don't have places to put the snow.
Okay.
In few situations.
Well, again, I live in Townsend, so we probably get as much snow as.
Oh, that's true.
Because we're right on the border. So that little blue mark that has a lot of snow right on the border, that's us.
Okay. So, but so it's seven o'clock at night, actually. Yeah, it's actually seven o'clock. Eighteen inches of snow are coming. You're about to go home for the night. What's the plan?
Well, you coordinate your routes. You have, you have set routes. Do your drivers have set routes?
Yes.
Okay. What's the staff? How many drivers?
Ten, maybe? Yeah.
All right. You have, I'm assuming there's safety criteria where there's, they're only allowed to drive a certain number of hours and they need a certain amount of rest, technically?
Technically.
Yeah, okay, I got that part too. I have to see the map. It's hard for me to visualize. But if you've got it coordinated, you have your staff. They knew their routes, I'm gonna assume. They've been around for a bit, they know their routes fairly well. To be honest with you, I don't think I'm going home. If I'm gonna be someone like that, I'd probably wanna be. I don't think you're looking for someone that's gonna be jumping in the hole and jumping in the truck. You're looking for an organizer and a communicator. But someone who's also gonna lead and direct. I come from a combat unit, so I'm not gonna ask someone to do something I'm not willing to stick around and be a part of. But it all gets down into coordinating. I'd like to see the efficiency of the routes. See what they look like, see if the timing can be better. See when they come through in the state. If you've got the side roads, if they've already done that, you can. But it all comes down into coordination.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, let's see, which ones do we focus on? Let's go, let's take it back, we'll go away from snow and ice, away from the roads. If you could talk to us a little bit about technology. And I'm gonna read this question as it was.
Okay.
Okay. Technology is rapidly changing in the delivery of public services. GIS systems are invaluable in mapping infrastructure, particularly in water and sewer. Social media has become an important conduit for information. What are your views and experience on using these evolving technologies, including social media? Particularly, we know you're probably strong in the mapping and GIS side, to help enhance service delivery here in Rutland?
All right, let's start with social media. I believe that municipalities, especially DPW, water, wastewater and stuff, should have their presence. It needs to be informationally only. It's not a give or take. I kind of like the police. You can put comments up there. I have a, there's water coming up out of the ground, things like that. Or if you're gonna plan to do work, what I've found, we don't have a visual presence. But we, or I have made, Chelmsford has like two or three that are their primary town groups. And I have made relationships with the admins of them. So if we have a main break, we have our own website. We maintain our own website. I'm one of the admins of it. We put our main breaks up on it, anything that's going on. I find, for whatever reason, people go to social media, there's an accident on Summer Street. Well, that's great, but the police don't know that yet, so you probably should give them a call. I like being able to see it or have a place for people to come and say they have an issue. It's not a place to debate. As an individual person, have at it. But as a municipal entity, do you have rules governing it? Do you have a bylaw or procedure or an SOP as a, as a municipal entity on social media? On what sort of interactions and who can and who cannot?
We have a social media policy. At this point, the DPW is really not, it's really not relevant to the DPW.
Okay. I would say it might be. If you're going to do work, it's a great way to announce it to the community in advance. You can put, we have a digital signboard. You can put, we have a digital signboard. Flushing, this area of town. Put it out a month in advance, people still get caught unaware. I find that sort of use of it is, is beneficial, um, but it needs to be limited and directed. I've seen other utilities use it to, uh, remind people, water bills are going out and things like that. But again, focused and directed, but it does have its uses. In this, in today's age, more people go onto Facebook to say they have a problem or they know about a problem, instead of calling the person that may have the answer, so if you can get that step ahead, it, it's beneficial. GIS, yes. Emergency response planning requires it, if you look what happened to Katrina. Site drawings for each individual house, for the service connection, or any building, it's usually off a landmark. You have a major disaster, those landmarks are gone. And that was the biggest part about bringing Katrina and some of the other communities back online after a major, um, weather event. And so it's highly recommended. And there are a ton of grants, you can get this done without impacting your overall budget. There are ways to do it there, um, I guess that's one of the things being where I am now. I've seen what's available out there to do stuff like that. We have every service connection GIS located, on every gate. It's something that communities are gonna have to, um, and DEP and EPA actually are, are funding that because it is so important. What was it, uh, technology-wise, um, website is a great use. I think things, technology. We changed, um, the system that we take in the information and produce reports. We don't use it to its fullest, um, but there are systems out there that can help you coordinate, that if you know how to use them, will start to, um, allow you to be a heck of a lot more efficient in your job. And I guess that's one of the things, if you're looking at technology, make sure it's efficient, that it's actually gonna make your job easier. It's nice to have all the bells and whistles. But if it's not making your job easy, you're just wasting money, and if it doesn't have a, a purpose. I, I have one of the very first in-house residual handling programs in the state. We take the iron and manganese backwash residuals, uh, the iron and manganese sludge. I don't like to use sludge because then it puts me into wastewater and there's a whole different gamma of requirements. But we reuse it, we have a beneficial reuse program. One of the things we needed to do that with was a hydro excavator or a back truck. That was a four hundred and ten thousand dollar item. But it couldn't be sole purpose, so a lot of our utilities are underground and it does a dual function. And it's actually been used a bunch of times, we're trying to move hydrants and we're finding that stuff got put in after hydrants, so one hydrant had a two-inch gas line across the lateral, one-inch electrical distribution line, um, a propane line that we don't know where it went. But we were able to excavate and move the hydrant because we had the hydro excavator. So looking at things and making sure they have more than one purpose if it's allowable is, is that sort of, so yes, I'm for technology.
You're for technology, that was a good end. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do a final question and then, yeah. Tell us some fun facts about Rutland and what you would do in your first hundred days here.
First hundred days? Well, I drove through here in the night, so I'd actually really like to see what the town looks like. And not when it's raining. I've never visited Dairy Farm. And that actually is kind of neat, I'm, all right, until my age, I'm actually starting to get old, because I like watching Chronicle now. And I like, I mean, it's one of the things me and my wife has actually started, and my wife, she said, she says, now I know we're old. But seeing that sort of character, seeing what that, that's like and stuff like that. I'm kind of like, uh, not kind of, um, I started microbrewing in college when that was my first organic chemistry lab. So I would love to see if there are any, I didn't, I wasn't able to find any online. But, um, microbrewing taprooms are popping up all over the place. So if you had any microbrewers in town, I would definitely like to talk to them. But that sort of thing, um, I like food. I may need to eat a little bit less these days. But I would like to, to go to a couple of local restaurants or a pub and just kind of take in, I, I love being in and around those type of places. Good enough?
Couple quick questions.
Absolutely.
How are you at returning phone calls?
Very good, sir. So long as there's not an emergency going on, I usually return them. It's one of the things that annoy me about my kids, they don't return phone calls, they don't return texts, um, but.
Referring to the citizens, not so much the board.
Okay, um, no.
Citizen calls.
I deal with those every, uh, water quality complaints. If it comes in after hours, it's the first thing in the morning. My boss had to, um, a lot of people, we're, our email contacts were listed on the, um, website and we were getting a lot of stuff over the weekend. And, um, they started letting us making sure, unless it was an emergency, just doing a quick. You will be called on Monday morning, stuff like that, but it's usually the next day.
Okay. And last follow-up, you mentioned grants, approximately how many grants have you written? And do you have a, maybe a cumulative total of how much money you've brought in for your community?
The big one was the, uh, SolarAid, which was two point three million. The smaller ones, I'm making a new math in my head.
More or less.
One twenty-five. Take the SolarAid, because there's just one big lump sum, probably hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
And how many grants have you personally authored?
Four.
Over twelve years?
Districts are not duck, it's, um, especially the Chelmsford Water District, they're extremely well organized and, and they very rarely financially want for anything. So for us, sometimes the grants were more work than they were worth. There's a lot of reporting that comes with them to the state. There are requirements on who you can use, who you can't use. Some of the stuff we got, we probably could have gotten better quality if we had paid for it ourselves. Um, and it wouldn't have taken up the staff time to do all the reporting and, and things like that. So the ones we did were mostly energy-related, I'll be honest with you. We did, uh, upgrades of the lighting systems of all our facilities. We did, um, uh, one of the grants paid for a water audit of all three districts. They are separate, but they're somewhat interconnected, so to judge the way water was being used, it made sense to do all three. Let's see what else, uh, leak detection equipment, we got a grant for, um, that with a stipulation that we co-used it with the water utilities directly used next to us. Currently writing one to get a boom trailer for the town, well, will be. Reason why I'm writing it is because Chelmsford was developed a lot before they ever thought of wellhead protection. I have Route four ninety-five, Route three, a major freight line, and two main natural gas transmission lines that go through my community and go really close to my wells. The freight line runs right along a brook. Last January, it derailed eight cars and dropped over two hundred tons of contaminated soil six and a half feet from the brook, which would have dumped it into, it would have gone right through my well field. So the idea of getting a boom trailer for the, to hold for the fire department made sense for us because the nearest one is in Lowell. But I'm gonna be honest with you, if something goes in that brook, they're gonna, they're gonna deploy it around the intake on the Merrimack River that takes in all, for all the water of Lowell, so we wanted one for us. So I co-wrote it with, or, um, am co-writing it with the environmental compliance person from Worcester, and it's a shared kind of utility. I do a lot of research on grants, it's just whether they, we need them or whether we approve them, and usually we don't. But I know how to use the state system, we're all, they're all listed. The biggest one that I've been part of was, and I, I kind of came on secondhand, is the MVP one. And that took, that took a bit of writing. But I can't take the, the lion's share of the credit, goes the economic developer, Evan Glansky in town. But I, I know how to do them, I know how to research them, um, and I'm fairly good at writing them.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Anybody else, we good? You have any questions for us?
Not at this time, I, I want, I, I do have a question. I didn't know if this was the final stage, but I was wondering if this progressed any further, that, um, the applicants, would we have a chance to meet your department heads and ask them questions?
That's never been asked of us before. Certainly, we would never prohibit our department heads from speaking with anyone who proactively reached out to them, but it's not something I think that we would be setting up for you on a.
And I guess what do you expect of the new DPW director? Are you expecting someone to?
Perfection.
That's what you bring? Oh, no, and that part of it, uh, but I'm being serious, are you expecting someone, um, to just maintain? Are you expecting someone to maybe advance the department a little bit? Not that it isn't, I find with a lot of places, and we fall into this a lot of times, it's tough enough just to beat the current rig. Just to keep everything working. But, um, if you really want to make your community sustainable, you need, you're gonna need someone to kind of look outside the box and look a little bit forward and, and, and push that way. So anyways, that was, that's the two I have for you.
I think you'll get four different answers if we all, and, and by the way, the most interesting answer is not here tonight. That's really the answer you, you wanted.
Anyone that's got skip on their formal selectments thing is a middle partner, should be.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're a rapidly growing community, we've just gone through about a quarter century's worth of rapid residential growth. We're bumping up against that ten thousand mark when it comes to population.
Let me ask you a question water-wise.
We are in a current water sewer moratorium, we have a district that grew exponentially as well. It grew along with the developments that went along with it unrestricted. We are right now in the process of trying to figure out what's the best next step for the town of Rutland. Because in having only one water source, which as you found out, is a surface water source, without any backup, despite the fact that the Quabon Aqueduct runs through our community, um, we have real concerns about water.
Connecting to that's expensive too.
Yes, so we've heard.
Well, all right, so.
It wasn't back in nineteen thirty-six, that's the problem.
No, no, well, the thing too is, I took, there's something called the SWME process, it was Sustainable Water Management Initiative. And I was one of the waterworks, uh, Mass Water Works members that spoke out against it. It was when DeVal was governor, um, and they redid the Water Management Act. And the changes to it are kind of significant. They can actually take water away from you if you don't meet the sixty-five-ten rule. And that's been my main focus, is making sure, because my permits, we, we do have permitted sources. And, um, so if you are up against your registered volume or your permitted volumes, there are ways to go about doing that. Again, I think I would tie this to the MVP program and, uh, I really do hope we get to talk further about employment. But even if you don't, I, I strongly encourage you as a municipality to look into that program extremely. I think it could be a big answer to a lot of your issues.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Not a problem.
You have what, about an hour drive home now, Townsend?
Actually, it was, I think it only took me forty minutes.
That's not bad, two and then up?
Yeah, I, I mean, I drive Route one nineteen east and then four ninety-five north every morning.
Okay.
So it's, it's, when school's in, depending if I miss that five-minute window, it's, it's over an hour's drive. It's about the same distance, so.
It's taking you an hour to get to Chelmsford?
Have you ever been on one nineteen?
I'm from Lowell, I.
You are, do you know Tom Gold? That's another thing, is building a relationship with your state reps. It's been invaluable to us. And Anne Goby, um, is very water-centric, um, very, she's been very helpful in a lot of the discussions with the governor, both of them, um, and is, is a strong supporter. So I, again, even if you don't, I would strongly recommend making, uh, stronger ties with her if you don't have them already. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you, it was good to meet you.
Very nice to meet you all.
Have a safe drive.
Always.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
Yes, thank you for coming.
You go.
Thank you very much.
I, do we, would you like to have a quick conversation or a four-minute break? Those are your choices.
I can use a four-minute break.
All right, recess until seven thirty. All right, meeting is back in session, it is seven thirty-one, and we're going to jump right into our next candidate, who I think is outside. Does our chief mind going to get?
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, I'm good.
Mr. Buckley, welcome.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
I'm Leah, nice to meet you.
Jeff Stelling, somebody.
How are you, sir?
Thank you.
I'm sitting here again.
Have a seat, wherever you're comfortable. If you want to be at the podium, you can be at the podium, whatever you want to do. Pass the, pass on the podium.
But thank you.
Thanks for coming. Why don't you jump right in, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll go through the questions.
If you already read my resume, my name is Joe Buckley. I've been working in public works since ninety-five, and a little bit before that. I'm married, I live in Worcester with my three kids. I, I like the public works field for the simple, uh, simple reason that you're there to help people. And it's a good day when you're actually able to help someone. It's a service-based industry, my job is to either maintain the quality of life for people or try and make it better. And that's why I'm in the field. I hope that gives you some insight. I'm currently, um, the Assistant Director in Charge of Two Operations for the City Worcester Department of Public Works and Parks. And I'm a Registered Professional Engineer for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's about it.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I like to fly fish.
Fly fish? Tell us why you're interested in Rutland and why you think you're ready for the challenge of being this town's next Public Works Director.
I've been working as an Assistant Director for fifteen years, plus or minus. And this is, even though it's a much smaller environment, it's still, it's a promotion and it's a lot, uh, it's challenges that I wouldn't, I don't see every day. I have the luxury of calling an engineer in-house to get some drawings, or I have, I can take advantage of an in-house GIS specialist.
Yeah, there's not gonna be any.
There's none of it.
That would be you.
Sorry, Jeff.
No, but my, my point is, um, uh, you have to get your fingers in every little aspect of it, and that, that's the challenge.
Can you describe for us the role of the DPW director, particularly in a town this size, the duties of that position? And how do you think that will align with your management style? Yeah, it's a tough one.
No, it actually really is, it isn't. I think, um, the, the DPW director in a town like Rutland has to make decisions hourly, daily, and for one, three and five years out per se. So I imagine you have to react to silly things like potholes every day, or somebody who's lost water pressure, or somebody who has a sewer backup. But at the same time, you have to make some long-term plans to deal with failed roadways. People, like a section of town that doesn't have adequate water pressure. And long-term, I, I thought about Rutland for a while. And I actually, I grew up in Holden, and the Rutland that was next to Holden then is a lot bigger and a lot more, there's a lot more people here. And I imagine there's a lot more demands than there were when I was a kid. And I think it's gonna keep growing and the demands on that person are gonna have to grow. So I think the Director of Public Works for the town of Rutland has to have that in the back of their head at all times. There's been a lot, a good amount of housing development over time, and I think there's two things in play. One, that infrastructure's gonna start to get tired, and you're gonna have to make plans to keep it up. And two, those people demand services, and you have to be cognizant of that. So I think, back to your original question, what does the Director of Public Works in the town of Rutland do every day? Well, you wanna maximize the resources you have, and then you also have to spend, put time aside to make long-term plans, that's how I see it.
Do you mind speaking a little more about how you would describe your management style?
My management style, I'm in operations, and I'm used to being on the ground. I try and get out and talk to the people who work for me at least once a day, whether it's the laborer, the foreman, the truck driver, it doesn't matter. You really have to be able to connect with your staff, you have to be approachable, and you have to be consistent, that's the other key point. So those are the three things I would describe my management style, I'm more in the thick of it than I am from above.
Okay, thank you. Asset management, critical to any public works department, particularly critical here, what would be your strategy, strategy for maintaining our assets, such as you're aware of them, and helping to assure that resources are adequate to fund a DPW capital plan, of which there is currently a vague idea of one?
A vague idea of one. That's a pretty good-sized open-ended question. A lot of cities and towns struggle with asset management, it's not a... I think I would start by looking roughly at what you have for inventory, 'cause a lot of asset management is based on what you have for inventory. I do know you have some GIS stuff, and that's a good platform to start from to do GI, to do asset management. Do you know, any idea what, what you have for infrastructure in the GIS, is it just roadways? Or parcels, or do you have?
We've updated the system recently and have been trying to integrate the Building Department along with Department of Public Works, but to be able to give you a comprehensive answer to what you're asking, probably I, we couldn't, we're trying to add things.
Well, the whole thing with asset management is, you, it, it interacts, and that's why GIS is such a critical tool. You can go from a spreadsheet to a graphic interface, and you're able to catalog the last time somebody cleaned a storm drain, or somebody flushed a hydrant, or something along those lines. So you can record all that in ass, in, in any off-the-shelf asset management program. And what it does is, it allows you to, A, make sure you don't forget to flush all your hydrants, and B, flag the ones that are problematic, so that you can start to formulate that capital program you were discussing. So to answer your question, which I didn't do, I think I would prob, you'd have to hire someone, you'd have to get a consultant on board, I don't think there's any way around that. 'Cause you're gonna wanna try and get a halfway decent inventory of what it is you have out there, then come up with a way to assess it and track it over time, and then develop your asset management program.
Semi-related to this.
Does that answer your question?
It partly does, yes.
I'm sorry.
We didn't talk about funding it, but we'll leave that to another
That's another
time.
Yeah.
I am gonna follow up with this, 'cause you didn't touch on it, and I'm sort of fascinated in your, what's going to be your Worcester-based answer, what do you feel is the best use of Chapter ninety funds?
I don't know if my Worcester-based answer would necessarily apply, I mean, I'm at the table for some of the Chapter ninety discussions, for not what you would think. I'm usually there to make sure that the road, the sewers under the road that we wanna pave isn't gonna collapse.
Okay.
That's where I'm there most often, I'm not part of the Chapter ninety discussion, you know, as to how those funds go, so I think that's off the table.
Okay.
It's gotta go to the open work, bottom line, it's where it belongs.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Both water and sewer services, highly reg, highly regulated by DEP, EPA, how familiar are you with the latest water quality standards and sewer discharge regulations? And what's your familiarity with Rutland's sewer and water system right now?
The regulations or working with regulators is, is a chronic thing that's not gonna go away, you have to work with regulators all the time. I could talk to, speak about Rutland's infrastructure at a thousand feet, I can't give you details. I do know that you have a collection system, I don't know, it probably services roughly what? Thirty percent of the town, forty percent of the town, and you go through our system into the Upper Blackstone, so you're a member of the Upper Blackstone. And you're able to take, there's some benefits to that, I mean, operating a treatment plant's expensive and tricky, you're better off doing that.
Okay.
You know, it's expensive.
We can talk about Newton Square another time, but anyway, go ahead.
I would love to talk about Newton Square, 'cause I was actually there, but we can talk about that after this. Regarding the drinking water, you, you, a lot of it's well and septic in town, but you also draw water from Muscat Pond Pond, and you have contract water operators, right? Do you, you don't know, who operates the, you operate the distribution system, but you don't do any treatment, do you?
We do.
Okay, and that's managed by staff on hand?
In-house.
Oh, good, okay.
Yep. In your current position, have you had occasion to work with state and federal officials, and have you worked on any grant submittals to any of the agencies, state, federal?
Haven't done any grant submittals in a long time.
Okay.
I work with state and federal officials a lot.
Okay.
How many grants would you estimate you've written?
Two in fifteen years, and the reason is, we looked at like three nineteen grants, we looked at a bunch of other grants, and more often than not, we could borrow the money, like this state revolving fund, we could borrow the money cheaper, or at the same cost, so it wasn't worth it for us, and just at the bond ratings.
Okay.
And the amount of time we ended up putting in for the grant we did get for Indian Lake, it didn't pan out. In other words, the, the time involved in processing the grant and preparing the reports for the grant outweighed what you were actually getting for funds.
Okay.
We had better luck supporting like a small local group who was working on a grant, and are doing in-kind services, than we did have actually being the author of the grant.
Interesting. We recognize that you're coming from the sewer side of things, and you did just reference that you're, you might be in the room for Chapter ninety discussions, but it hasn't been a, a big part of your, your work. But can you tell us about, if not your experience, then your understanding, in developing and maintaining a pavement management plan, your views on roadway, management and maintenance, and on snow and ice? We have a hundred miles of roadway, so obviously it's a big thing for our DPW department.
It's unfortunate that the roadways and the snow and ice are usually the forefront of what people think of when they think of public work, they forget about the stuff underneath oftentimes, it's the one, the one that's the most important. I would, again, I'd have to start with a halfway decent inventory, and see what you've got for roadways, I don't know, I have any idea how much you have that's paved, any idea how much you have that's unpaid, how much is public, how much is private, how much is in control of the Commonwealth? You're straddled by some sizable roads that are owned by the Commonwealth, you don't know if they maintain those or not.
One twenty-two A and sixty-eight.
So they do do that?
Yep.
Oh wait, alright. I managed almost a hundred miles of side street routes when I was a supervisor, I've done that work. For snow, I've, I've actually done that, I did it for about ten years.
Okay.
That's a thankless job, you have to be on the ground all the time, there's never enough resources, but I do know how to do it.
Okay. Let's talk completely separate from snow and ice, sort of, technology, rapidly changing in the delivery of public services. You just referenced GIS systems, invaluable in mapping infrastructure, I know we talked about that in sewer and water, but social media has also become a big source of information for so many of our residents, what are your views and experiences on using these technologies, and how would you possibly use them in Rutland?
How would I use them in Rutland?
If at all?
No, I think you'd have to, I, I, I really do, 'cause even where I am, people, they go to Facebook to find out why the roads close, they go, they look online to find out why there's no water in an area, I, I, I think our world demands constant updates, if you will, we're used to having that, so I mean, to go on, just set up a, something as simple as a Facebook page for Public Works and have, just put announcements out there as to what's going on, I think that's a, it's probably worth it. You also get to hear when people aren't happy with how you plow streets and some other miscellaneous things, but I, I do think it's prudent.
Do you get a lot of those phone calls?
I did when I first, I did when I first started, but not anymore, because we have a whole department that does that, so I don't see it until it, it's filtered before it gets to me.
What do you do when you get a phone call?
What do you mean?
So you go, you go in, you open up your office, you go in there, and there's calls from angry residences on your voicemail.
Okay.
What do you do?
You call them back, you find out what's going on, you send somebody out there as quick as you can. You have, that, that, those are the people you work for, you have to respond right away. I'm used to that.
Tell us about your budget experience, how would you go about building a budget in a pub, very public setting, in particular in Rutland? And can you give us an example, if possible, of when you presented a budget to an appointing or appropriating authority, or a citizen public forum, I know in Worcester it's a little different from here, were you successful? Were you a hundred percent successful, was it a percentage, how'd it go?
Most of the budget work I did actually goes before in-house staff.
Okay.
I don't actually have to go directly to anyone who sees it outside of there. But I have been successful with the capital equipment, and I have been, I've had to develop plans for sewer reconstruction over time, and I've been successful with that. The O and M is tricky, you can't always predict what fuel is gonna cost or asphalt's gonna cost, that, that's a little bit more difficult. I just make a recommendation to the people who go forward with the budget, I don't actually do it myself.
Do you find yourself attending the city council meetings at all, just to?
I read after they're done.
You read, okay.
I read after they're done.
Okay.
But our organization is so big that usually we'll have a commissioner and two assistant commissioners at those meetings.
So I'm gonna press this, this is obviously hypothetical, but here in Rutland, the process is very different, we are a direct town meeting, and you will be defending the budget that you build in front of?
No, I get that.
Annual town meeting, okay.
Yep. And it's up for, you have to get a thick skin, and you have to make the best decisions you can, that's all. I think certain, like the enterprise stuff, like the water and sewer, I don't know how much pushback you can force on that, I mean, that's necessary. I imagine fighting over which street gets repaired might get difficult, or some land items people may not believe are necessary, but it is what it is.
And I'm gonna, one more, so you've referenced a couple of times now how deep a bench you have, that you can-
We do, we do.
Right, go to your-
You don't have that here.
We don't have that here.
And if I'm here, I don't, I, I'm the guy at the front.
Well, not only do we not have it, we are most likely wildly understaffed, even when it comes to just general laborers, how do you foresee handling that?
I went through it on our own side once, about five years ago, and I had to learn how to write some contracts and put out some bids, so that I could make sure those services were still provided. I think that's a big player in some of that work, plus at some point, you have to convince those same people in that town meeting who don't wanna pay for more people, you may have to get some more people, it may come to that.
Okay, thank you.
How many people do you supervise?
Fifty. I was telling Bob I did interviews all day today. I was on the other side.
When do you wanna leave? I know you mentioned it was a promotion, but-
Oh, um, you mean how soon could I go?
No, why, why would you wanna leave the comfort of Worcester? With seeing fifty people to coming here and overseeing-
Like I said when I got here, it's different, I've been in the same place for almost twenty years, and it's good to look forward and try something new. That, that's really the motivation, I'd gone, in, in plain English, I'd gone as far as I could go. And I wanted to keep moving, I hope that answers your question.
I have a question, so you're a professional engineer, how much do you-
Only on TV.
How much do you anticipate that coming into play in a position as a DPW superintendent versus still looking for outside engineering support? I guess where's that line for you?
I think you're still gonna wanna go outside with a lot of it. The, the PE stamp, you're supposed to, if you design a road, you're not supposed to build a new road or a new bridge or anything else that, without a stamp on it, that's the way the laws are written. But it's also meant to be a competency, competency test of sorts, so that, that's why it was so important for me, but at the same time, you almost want that outside, those engineering services. The leg up I have is I can speak the language a little better, and have some idea what it is they're trying to sell me on, but I still think you have to go outside.
Thank you. If you hadn't mentioned it, I would never phrase it this way, but you just said you've been doing interviews from the other side of the table all day. I, I have had a favorite interview question for a long time, and it was the, you know, first hundred days thing, I'm kind of sick of it, so I'm hoping you can answer for us.
I was interviewing general labor.
That's fine, doesn't matter.
Okay.
You answer for us your favorite question, what is the favorite question that you always ask people that you're interviewing?
Oh. My favorite question, it's always, why do you want this job, or what do you bring to the table?
Okay.
And that's usually, that's my favorite question.
Alright, go ahead.
Oh, that's nice.
Backfire.
No, I said that, I was, I was very straightforward.
And you'd be amazed the answers you get. And after I'm done answering the question, I'll tell you a funny story. I have twenty to twenty-five years of public works experience, I've seen a lot of stuff. I bring that to the table. I wanted the challenge of, of running the whole thing from the top, not so much in the middle, which is why I looked outside. I'm not far from here, and I can still get here, and again, like, going back to your initial question, how do you manage, you gotta be on the ground, you gotta ask questions, and a lot of times you gotta see it. So that's what I bring to the table. So anyways, you ready for the funny story?
Yeah.
Alright, so we're, we're, this is about a year ago, we're interviewing general labor, these are the guys who, you know, are on the shovel or in a dump truck or something like that. Guy comes in with an immaculate suit, speaks very broken English, we do the whole interview, we're all done, he gets up and asks everybody to be quiet and blesses us all, and then walks out.
Wow.
Different.
Did he get the job?
He did.
Okay.
He has seven children.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us? 'Cause we zip through our list, you know.
How many people actually here, the, it says fifteen to twenty, can you give me a breakdown of what those people are and what they do?
So the one person who's here from the department is in water, so we have a water division, which is essentially like a person and a half kneel is at fair. Yeah, we have a sewer division, they are both under enterprise funds.
Yep.
And then over in Public Works Direct, and a couple of those people have overlapped in the past, and, you know, there's an effort, obviously, to sort of send, make people specialize. We have a foreman, and then at this point, what are we at right now, five? Five. Tiny. Wildly, wildly understaffed, and it has been a known issue, well, it's been a known issue for many years now. We're at the point where we don't have enough drivers, in some cases, to man our equipment in the winter.
You can't do it with five. No way.
No.
Somebody's gonna get hurt. Do they put, do you hire out to do that work?
Yeah, we've certainly had multiple seasons in the past where, you know, maybe it was because of an injury, you know, to your point, if we had an injury on, on the job, where we've had vacancies. In some cases, we're gonna be doing some seasonal hiring, but we've also contracted out for snow and ice, absolutely.
So where are the rest of the employees? You, no, but the, the advertisement said fifteen, what's that?
I think we're counting, we're probably, we're counting the superintendent himself, one, two, three.
Custodial.
Custodial, three more.
You need some more people.
Clerical. Clerical staff is too many.
There we go, thank you. It's a group effort.
That's a small staff.
It's a small staff.
For a hundred miles?
So I think, and I, I'm not sure how much you're aware of, but we've been working under probably the past dozen years or so of just really dire budgetary concerns.
Sure.
Where every other department was being taken, you know, carried along as best we could, and DPW being the biggest funded department for the most part, was bearing the brunt of, hey, can we cut a little bit more, can we slice a little bit more, they were always the department that you would go to. We somehow- We somehow managed to not do any real layoffs, but we were doing a lot of attrition situations. And so we are now in a, in a situation where, honest to God, in the upcoming budget cycle, we clearly are gonna need somebody who's going to take a look at the department and the way it's structured and work with us and work with the town administrator in, in making some changes and some updates. We've made progress in some of our other departments. We have a planner who just started. Literally our first planner. This is our second ever town administrator and he's in interim. The police are finally up to, pretty close to where they need to be on a per capita basis. Fire, could you nod at least and say you're doing pretty well? We have two, you know, we have paramedic coverage and two ambulances. But DPW is the last bastion of, I don't know how they're doing it. And to your point about, you know, phone calls coming in and complaints, it's really a statement to our staff and how well they do that the amount of complaints that we get are exponentially higher than they are.
We're down three, I think.
At least, yeah.
Ten years ago.
Yeah.
We're down three men.
Yeah. In a town that has grown.
That's my point.
Yeah.
And it's not...
We'd add roads, we'd edit roads and diminish the staff.
Great.
That was before. Before we were all aboard. Now that we're here, we're gonna fix it.
That's right.
Okay.
How's it make you feel?
That is what it is.
Yeah.
You know the battle in Worcester with the school district and, and that fight about where funds go. We have that battle, but it becomes more complicated by the fact that it's a regional district. So when the regional budget passes, whether we pass it or not, we're paying that bill.
Did you go to watch Housit?
I did.
So you know.
Yes. But I was in Holden. They didn't much care.
We don't hold that against you.
I never went back.
So I, I'll ask the hundred day question. Kind of, your first hundred days here, what, what, it's probably gonna be the start of snow and ice season, or are they guys...
Yeah, you wanna get through that in one piece. No, I'm not kidding. I mean, that, you've got five people. I don't even know what you have for equipment. You've got a hundred miles to tackle. I gotta make connections. No, I wanna get through that first. That would be it.
So head down, prioritize that.
That's it, yeah. And hope nothing breaks in the meantime. And I don't mean just trucks, water pipe. You're still gonna have something snapping in the winter. I'd be surprised if you don't. No water main break.
The system's old and we have a fair amount of...
So you must sub that out and do that in-house.
We always do it in-house.
You fix the water main break in-house?
We do a lot of it.
With five guys?
Yeah.
Wow.
It took like an awarding at five degrees.
It's always two o'clock in the morning.
No, no, we had one the last day of school, a significant water main break that ended up canceling a school day for one of the buildings because of the timing of it, yeah.
So you folks see the deficit and where you need to...
Yes, yes, we do.
Well, that's good. That's not as scary.
You should be doing something about it two different things.
I have another question for, we've been dealing with the stormwater regs and everything. Do you have any experience with the new regulations that we're facing?
Yes. And you, you talk about, you can worry about money on that one.
Yeah.
That one's a pain in the neck. That's not easy. And it's expensive. But yes, I am familiar with stormwater regulations.
Are you aware of any funding available to offset any of that, those expenses or additional expenses that... I know from you, you said the grants are kind of that balance.
Yeah. You can, you can apply, there are some grants you can apply for. One of them's three nineteen, but there's another one out there too. I'd have to review what they would expect of the town, but I mean, it's manageable.
Manageable with borrowing?
A lot of it's evaluation out of the gate.
Okay.
They're gonna wanna know how many catch basins you have. They're gonna wanna know where all the catch basins go. They wanna know, what do you do for spill response? A lot of it's inventory and documenting how you manage the infrastructure before you actually have to get involved in treating what comes out of the end of the pipe. That's where it gets expensive. But the best thing you can do is return, when they ask for, when the, the best thing you can do is, even if you, you write a bare bones letter report, get that report out. Don't sit on it. That's the best thing you can do, cause they're, they're in some ways understaffed and they're, they check the box when the letter comes in. So you start there.
Do you expect you'd have a huge challenge in making that transition from working in a city where the funding sources available to you are just so different?
Oh, yeah.
Not just bigger, different.
They're very different.
We regionalize a lot of things when we can. Even in DPW, we have a piece of equipment that we share with, I can't even think of how many towns.
What is the piece of equipment?
It's a, it's like a, what is it, a...
Bucket truck. Bucket truck with a chipper.
That's definitely a challenge. Yeah, no, I agree. Do I think I'm up for the challenge? Yes. Do I think it's a challenge? Sure it is. I mean, where I am now, compared to what you have, I have unlimited resources.
Yeah, have we mentioned no? Okay.
I put five three-person crews out today. And, well, but the scary thing you gotta realize is, I was working all day Sunday because we had an apartment building with a hundred residents that had no water overnight because we had a pipe from eighteen seventy that had collapsed. You don't have that, do you?
Not quite eighteen seventy, but...
Not quite a hundred, oh.
But we're getting there. Okay, no more questions?
No, ask as many as you want. It's been good.
All right.
That's my, I get to ask more questions, I thought, so...
You can, yeah.
Go ahead.
So it's unfortunate you don't have a lot of staff and you talked a lot about capital. You wanna have a capital program and I imagine the goal is for roads, water and sewer. And what about equipment?
Yeah, so I, just to give you some sense, we've been waiting three years and we keep putting it off. And hopefully, fingers crossed, town meeting in two weeks will approve a new to you, new to us holder, sixty-nine thousand dollars. That's the level we're at. We have not seen any large DPW expenses come through and be debt excluded in, in several years now. Some instances, the dump, the big dump truck, I think was... Yeah.
No, but I guess I didn't phrase my...
Sorry.
Is the intent to develop a program for that? Whether you fund it or not, you want to at least get it down on paper.
Yeah, so, so we've just been through, you know, twenty, twenty-five years worth of exponential residential growth, right? It, it has gone along with, or, or in part been allowed because of the fact that our water sewer system is unrestricted right now. I say that, and let me correct myself, it actually is restricted. We, a few months ago, set a water sewer moratorium so that we could evaluate the situation. And to be perfectly honest, a hundred days, snow or not, one of the things that the new superintendent director is gonna have to do for us is help us see that process through before the moratorium ends, that we know what we're supposed to be doing.
Somebody to help with that?
No. That wasn't easy answer, no.
You don't have any consulting engineers you use on a regular basis?
We do. We use Weston and Sampson regularly.
Okay.
We have not consulted them yet on this. So we have a mapped water sewer district. We know where the boundaries end. It pretty much looks like an octopus at this point.
They all look like that.
Well, ours is worse somehow, because we're so hilly. And, you know, you know as well as, as that in Worcester, but because we're so hilly and everything is coming in from a high point at the center, unlike Worcester, we're just adding and adding and adding pump stations all the time and, you know, the town...
Wait, ton of pump stations or...
Uh, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. So, to that point, another thing that's on the fall town meeting warrant is small money.
The fun stuff.
Yeah.
That's the fun stuff, but I, I don't mind doing that work.
Okay. But, you know, part of the, part of the moratorium is we have to cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is. So small money, but we, there's anecdotal evidence that there's a well up at the old Rutland Heights Hospital property. We have to test it. We have to know whether or not we even have additional water capacity somewhere besides Mushka Park.
I think that's a good call. But that, I don't mind that work, no.
Okay.
Whether I can get it done in a hundred days, it depends. Weston and Sampson's got a very good group. But are you gonna get pushback from the town to fund that work?
You could expect to get pushback on most everything if you're gonna do it.
Well, but then we've, just trying to think what you...
Honestly, presented, presented with enough information and given it to them as transparently as possible, particularly when it comes to water. We've had wonderful support from the residents in town. We started off, it's been, it's been ten years now, but it's a massive I and I project.
If you wanted to get it done in a hundred days, you should be moving now.
No, no, we were back to your hundred days and I'm sitting there saying, you know, just because there's a snowstorm doesn't mean you can't work on the warrant warrant.
No, but you, you know, you asked me what I'm worried about.
But to that point, I think the moratorium ends May or June, so, of twenty nineteen, so it's not like it's just in effect as a...
And you just wanna be able to give those folks numbers as to what you can continue to develop based on what you've got.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, you should be starting now.
We should have been starting twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago.
No, but to hit June.
Yeah, yeah.
And even then, it's gonna be tabletop. They won't have any field verification.
So you can see what we're up against.
It is what it is. No, I understand. And you might, what may come out of it is, you may get a recommendation from the engineer that says they still have to go back and do more field verification. You may not have your answer in a hundred days.
I mean, the moratorium could be extended also. It's not, but that's kind of our target was this one-year moratorium to collect as much information as reasonably possible and...
Right. We're bumping up against capacity with Mushka Park and we do have a CMRPC study going on right now that's gonna give us some build-out numbers in time for spring. Those build-out numbers in some ways are related to whether or not we close the water sewer district. Because they will then amend their numbers and they're trying to work in all the eventualities depending on, you know, what happened.
It's based on fire protection. Not so much drinking water.
There's a fire chief behind you going...
He's nodding.
Full town. I like to have you smart.
Well, the only other question I have was on the, you said janitors, how much of the public buildings does this person have to manage? Do you have to put out the quotes for roofs and take care of all the heating systems and all that stuff as well, right? I'm no stranger to that, I was just curious.
We do have on our town warrant two new, uh, no, we just funded from previous town meeting, two new roofs for this building and the public safety building. So that's, but we have some more studies on the horizon.
No, I just wanna know who did, that's all.
One of the things our last town administrator...
Is there a purchasing person?
No.
Okay.
Town administrator is, is the...
Can you help with the purchasing, Bob?
Sure.
I know most of the basic rules, but the, you know, that whole bid thing, does the director have to put out all the bids too?
Yes.
But you'll have a lot of help on that.
Yeah, cause you can mess that up really easy.
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
I'm being realistic, that's all.
Oh, yeah. No, I, it's complicated.
Yeah, it's tricky.
I feel like we're being interviewed now and we're not doing well.
I know. But we're being honest.
Chase him right out the door.
We still sit in here, so... Seth, trip him if he goes out.
Warm up his car.
No, that's it, I'm good. And I can talk to you about Newton Square outside of the session.
Yes, definitely. Another time.
Thank you so much.
Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
And I wasn't scared.
Thank you so much.
It's very good to meet you, sir.
Thanks, Bob.
Drive safe tonight, the rain and the...
The rain didn't, the fog was weird, huh? Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, I'm going to give everybody a chance to just take a breath. We only had, I think, two more things in the agenda. I'm just gonna go through those and then we'll circle back. The first one is a street sign request at the intersection of Campbell and Glenwood. It's already been signed off. You happen to be here, so you're on the hot seat, Seth. We've been here before. We've had other street signs installed. Now we're putting more signs. You approved it. You're, you're shaking your head, but...
I'm the last one to sign, so I just follow the lead of the other two.
Oh, I'll say that.
Wow.
I'm sorry. This request is, the second time this request has come through for this intersection. My first time I did comment that tree should be cut so the corner can be... I got overruled and so now you have the request in front of you, so...
Okay, so it's been less than six months that we were here and talked about this and these...
Ever had an accident at that intersection?
Sure.
Knock on wood.
Intersection at Campbell and Glenwood. And yet, the funny thing is, we really need Skip here because he was absolutely involved in this conversation and saying, well, it was very specific to one direction.
Step it back. To Skip's ear.
You all right with that?
Yeah.
Great. All right, so no action tonight.
I mean, I know the intersection pretty well, but I'm interested to hear...
Start to skip.
Was it the same resident petition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, it's the same resident? I didn't remember that, okay.
Thank you.
I, I mean, I, the conversation I remember having was that in one direction, you shouldn't have to stop because it's an appropriate continuation, which is you're on Glenwood, you're heading north.
This is for a four-way, right?
Why wouldn't you stop there?
All the way.
I think that would cause more accidents.
That's gonna confuse them.
It makes me wanna drive over there.
Two steps.
We might need a field trip.
A field trip, yeah. So speaking of field trips, good segue. We had a, an email, actually, I think is how it started, but it's in correspondence. Yep, there it is.
Breen below.
Yes, a request for an official perambulation and I, I, I don't think there's anyone in the room right now that remembers this, but when I was first elected, a former selectman came forward and said, one of the things we needed to do and we were far behind doing it was an official perambulation and even still, we have not yet done it. And so Princeton has an actual official perambulator, town perambulator. He's in the process of, of coordinating this thing, which basically the representatives from each community meet at the intersection of where the town boundaries lie and you sort of make official again that marker, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, we're, we're long overdue. I know you and Laura and I, I feel like the whole office has been back and forth with him. He obviously has a, a real job as well and so he really can't make board of select meetings to give us a dog and pony show. That was never his, his goal. I, I know he asked about Sunday.
Yeah, he wanted to go out yesterday and I feel bad about it, birthday party, so...
Yeah, so I'm not sure if he did his witness mark at the Rutland-Princeton location or not. We don't need the other communities there. It just would have been a nice way to sort of get us back into the process to, to do it along with him.
Right.
And the, the information that he has up on the Princeton website is actually very complete. So I'd love to proceed with this. We could go ahead and name a town perambulator. It clearly had been a selectman in the past. If you would like that role, we can nominate you. And, and start the process and hopefully use him at least as a, as a source of information or reference, even if we have to do it ourselves.
It'd be an honor to be the perambulator for the town.
All right.
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
Would we wanna wait until Skip goes back? Cause that might be something in his, his domain.
Clearly, it's not time sensitive. If you wanna wait, we can...
Yeah, let's step it back.
So we're bumping two things up to the next agenda.
His dream.
His dream.
It's the first in stone.
No, because he was the other person who was here when it was actually Mr. Becker, it was Ray Becker who brought it up.
Yeah, let's, let's wait for a full board here. I don't wanna step on somebody's...
It's supposed to be every five years and we haven't done it in, well, it's been eleven just with me and Skip on the board. And before that, I wanna say Mr. Becker said it had been at least another eight, so long time.
Does the perambular paint all the, the stones in town or only the, the shared stone?
The corner markers.
Okay.
The corner, yeah.
And how many do we have?
They have to be marked.
I don't know.
Right, but there's a whole bunch of other pillar stones.
Every way there's a joy, every way there's a turn.
Supposed to walk the boundary, right?
Right, it should be the full bound, so I don't know how many markers there are.
I remember reading an article in Landmark a while ago about, I think it was a gentleman in Holden that was painting all the white stones, so if he saw...
That's him.
Yeah, so if he's...
You have to paint the date on it when you certify.
But I remember repainting them white because a lot of them, the white paint had chipped off, you know, and...
A good Eagle Scout project.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, actually.
You can put something out here instead of just rushing to it.
Okay.
But we still need someone to oversee it.
I think we would need an adult to be, at least over eighteen.
Right.
Which gets a little sketchy with the Eagle Scouts, right, because they need to finish prior to being...
Maintain the stones and make sure, I bet you, you may have a struggle finding the other four corners.
Not just the corners. Uh, not just the corners. Um, yeah, I re- I mean, I vaguely remember Mr. Becker saying that in some cases it was a, kind of a hike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In rough terrain, yeah.
Right.
One of the ones in Princeton's had a swamp.
Nice.
With stones sticking out of the water.
I'm sure it wasn't a swamp when they started.
Quite interesting, it's, it's.
So I, I know we've been back and forth. We don't really know if, um, if Mr. Keven ended up doing that one corner. Either way, we would have to do it, so whether he did it or not is not relevant necessarily, but I'm wondering if we should also reach out to Holden and see if they've been doing theirs, get a sense.
Well, we could talk on Thursday. We'll see some other select groups there.
That's right, yeah.
He has, I know he was trying to reach out to Princeton's other board of towns and he hadn't heard back from them.
Okay. Okay.
What would be our shared border in towns as well, so.
Well, it'd be nice enough to do it in November.
And that was another thing.
Yeah, good summer project.
Yeah, he, he did recommend in one of the emails that whether it's coming to a quick play in this as well, so.
Although I would think right now is the perfect time to do it.
It's definitely a fall.
Hunting season?
No, where blade, where, I mean, where blade is orange.
Orange.
Where blade is orange, but.
Swatch, yeah.
Well, typically, this is the driest.
I was gonna say, not this fall cuz it's so rainy.
No, not this fall.
No foliage.
No foliage, right.
Right.
I would think the summer would be rough.
Underbrush is gone.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
So put some thought into it. This is a project the board would like to at least.
I think so.
See, okay, great. Does anyone have anything else before we turn back? No? Okay, so we've had, um, our two MRI candidates. Thank you, Bob, for coordinating all that.
Thank you, Bob.
Does anybody have any comments?
I would, personally, I would like to, uh, I would like to hear from the internal candidate, quite honestly.
Um, that MRI was.
Well, I was, I've. We're opining about these two.
Before commenting, Mom?
I don't know, I just, I think I would like to hear from him or her.
So for clarification's sake, the internal candidate went through the MRI process also, correct?
Yes.
And was in like the top handful. But not, what we, what we, uh, inter- heard from tonight was the top two candidates.
I could, for what it's worth, and I know it's totally up to the board, but I did meet with him today and, um, you know, could explain the process to him and I thought it was owed to him to understand where we were going and that there was two recommended from MRI. Um, he understood, but again, you know, this whole process is the board's call.
Instead of making like a decision, a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the two that we heard tonight, I would just like to say, this is still open. This is still open. I would like to hear from that other, that other person before we, uh, approve or disapprove of what we've heard tonight.
Well, if that's the case, I'd prefer reserve comments until after that person's.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. Keep this open.
If that's what you wanna do, I mean, I.
I guess, I, I guess I'm wondering why we would have hired MRI to do our initial vetting.
Cuz they vetted the internal candidate who was still in the top handful.
But didn't forward him to be interviewed, and I guess we don't know the reasons for that officially. Um, I think the sense I have is that in looking for that next level of professional, um, development. That.
I think we may have, we may have that with one of the candidates.
I don't wanna put a very good employee in a really hard position, I think. And in.
We could leave it up to him or her.
And in fairness, you know, obviously I'm coming at this from having been here for a while and, and you two haven't, so I get that. You're seeing it in a, in a different way. Yeah, I, I.
Could, you could offer it?
I personally felt like we saw one very strong candidate tonight. I would just as soon bring that person back if we have further questions. Um, if at that point you wanted to have, uh, I don't know how we could do this.
So I am, I think coming at this probably from the least amount of information. So I don't know where any of these placed other than, and even who MRI looked at, other than the top two candidates that were forwarded to us. And my sense, just coming at it from a, not necessarily a municipal standpoint, but a kind of practice standpoint, is we hired a company to do our recruitment for us and we entrusted, we told them what we wanted, we entrusted them with our staff, with that. And they provide, and we paid them for that service and they provided us with two candidates. Apparently not one of the internal ones. We know that from the resumes. I don't know where the internal candidate placed, but if we hired a company to do this and I guess I'm coming from, we should have trust and respect for the company to look at what they provided us. I also understand it's a, it's a, it's a mutual, like, courtesy to look at internal candidates also. We didn't ex, I guess my point is we didn't exclude the external candidate from, or the internal candidate from the MRI search, from MRI's process. They didn't forward that.
They had many interviews too, with my understanding, right?
I think they had phone interviews and essays or something.
I think of the, the number of candidates they had, my recollection is that they had seventeen apply. And I think they had said to me all along that, that Rutland was gonna be a challenge just because of the location, because of the size, because of the pay scale. Um, but they did receive seventeen. The internal candidate was one of four that they put through their own interview process. And I think it was largely because of their understanding of Rutland and also some feedback they got from the selectmen, primarily with an emphasis on administrative strengths and going in an administrative direction for this position that they made their decision on, on these two tonight.
I do think to that point, um, it was clear that the first candidate, Todd, um, simply didn't have the boots to on the ground experience to be able to come into a town like this right now. Um, could he possibly function at a high level in a Worcester where we hear, you know, how deep the bench is and how much professional, uh, help they have in all areas? Yes, he might, but I, I, I don't think he would, um, have a, a good winter, that's for sure. I don't think we could. I don't think we would be in a position to be comfortable, interesting towns day to day. And, you know, and all that complexity that, you know, you're, you're right there, front of the line all the time with that. Um, but to that point, you know, and in fairness, I, I think the problem too is I've seen what an internal candidate push has done, um, I hate to say this, but at the school district. Um, we haven't seen anyone from DPW speak at town meeting, come to our meetings, um, present a project, do all the things that we're gonna need that person to do. I think, you know, to your point, and I agree with you, I know where you're coming from with this, that pulling up from within and getting those people to where they're eligible and ready to be at the next level is what we should be doing. I don't know that we've done that with our employees, with any of them, uh, yet.
I don't know.
Yet. Well, but I think we do know, and I think it's because I, we just, we simply haven't seen, we haven't seen them, we haven't heard from them. Um, it's hard to imagine that they would be, and I'm saying sort of a they, just because we should be working with all of them to move up to that next level, whether it be former and, or, or, you know, whatever. Um, where they'd be comfortable in that role, when it's going into CMR PC meetings, seeing us through this massive tip project, uh, when we start talking about stormwater and all the regs, um, I, I think we need that, you know, like I jokingly said perfection, but perfection. The person that knows what it is to be boots on the ground, but also has the professional bona fides to get us to that next step, so, yeah.
I would like, I, I would like to extend it to, uh, the, that internal candidate before getting behind. I know which candidate you're, you're leaning towards.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, kinda just like, yeah, I wanna hear one more. I'd like to hear from one more.
So.
Uh, before we go all in here.
Well, so let's do this. Um, did anybody wanna move forward with Todd? I mean, we obviously can do second interviews. We could have a whole set of new questions. We might have other things we wanna ask.
He's a water guy. He, he's a great water commissioner, um, the other guy. You get a little bit more excited about.
Okay.
But, uh, still leaves me with wanting to hear what else is out there, you know?
And I'm hesi- I'm hesitant for that only because I feel like we have one qu- candidate that I, I am excited about and the timing of everything. So I don't want the ca- I don't want the calendar to drive everything for us, but also knowing.
I'm talking this week. You could make an invite this week and hear.
Well, we have the round table on.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Available every night. Except for Thursday.
I'm not.
Book a call of vote, you know, call a vote and.
Well, you can make a motion, I think, at that point. Um, we don't have any motion on the table to call a vote to, other than I, I do want, um, just a clarification. Did, did anyone want to either move forward with Todd or to make a motion to, um, express our thanks for going through the process, but that would be going in a different direction?
I'll make that motion to express my thanks for coming in.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any more comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Ananous. All right, great. Um, and then the next process would be if you wanna make the motion to take, uh, on a interview, other than what was presented to us.
With the same questions, um, just for final, just last call, you know, before we get behind the other gentleman who, who is very interesting and very qualified and, uh, of course, there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee that he'd leave his very comfortable and secure environment.
Fair.
To come here. This could be something, an application to see, you know, how viable he is in the, in the field. It could be something where he respectfully declines and now here we are, you know, going back. I don't, I, I don't, I don't see the arm and, and, uh, opening it up to, especially when there is an internal candidate that came within the top four.
I will say one issue we have, if you, I, I don't know that we can do exactly the same questions. Our meetings are televised and they're live.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And so the preparation time available to anyone who comes after us would, you know, even if it's a rolling process and somebody just shows up from MRI tomorrow, we, I feel we'd have to.
I try not to interject myself in the process, but I wanna make two points. Um, the first is, when you talk about either of the candidates that you interviewed tonight, I'm not being sure whether they'd take it. I think that after these interviews, with both of them understanding that there were two people, to have the board then take an interview, an internal candidate would not send a good signal to those two candidates. Um, I've been involved in recruitment where there's been, uh, an internal candidate, uh, with similar circumstances and have withdrawn uh, because of the signal that sends. The other thing is you have to be aware, and I'm sure you are, that this is gonna go from a process that's been handled by professionals to a very political process. Um, and the board, I think, is gonna be subject to a lot of calls and public opinion and it's gonna change the whole nature of the recruitment process if you suddenly invite in a, an internal candidate. I don't know the connections. I don't, you know, maybe I'm speaking out of turn and don't know the dynamic in Rutland, but that's what I've seen. It, it changes the nature of the recruitment process completely.
Now, that goes to what Leah said, trusting the professional that you hired to bring forth the best quality candidates.
I guess I completely understand your point and I, I, I hear that. I guess I would be more apt to push for that had that candidate not been included in the MRI cer- in the, in the MRI process. But having had all those, all the candidates, that candidate included in the MRI process and MRI being able to keep that as a profession.
And then MRI is saying, that being said, these are still that you're talking to.
Right. Looking at your wants and needs for current as well as future, these are your two candidates. So that's where I'm coming from, but I don't know, like I said, I'm probably one of the least informed on this aspect of the DPW staff and dynamics and internal candidates and everything, so that's just my.
I think it's clear, you know, Jeff, from what, from what you're, you know, where you're headed in this direction is, we really do, and I, I was, I wasn't just saying that to, um, to Joe, we need to take a long, hard look at, at structure in the department. You know, is it possible that what we need is, is not just a foreman, um, as the number two? That's a distinct possibility. We need a bigger department and, and it's not just laborers. Um, a- and so I think that might come into play as well. But I think it'll only come into play with a strong person up at the top and, and someone with some, some educational background. Um.
And I do like your point that I think the town needs to be more intentional in, in offering those opportunities, training wise, informal as well as formal, to internal people to have career advancements within
Yeah.
the town and not always be looking outside of town for, for, to fill.
Yeah. To set, set them up for success.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I'm considering myself a townie and, uh, I kinda like people with institutional knowledge of the town in there and, and you know, kinda turns me away a little bit is to hear somebody not asking us questions like the first gentleman to turn the interview into his interview, asking us questions about the town when it would be nice to have somebody who has some inside knowledge of what's going on and things like that, so there's a lot to be said about that.
And I, I mean, I look at it as an outsider coming in with a, a fresh perspective and I think it's important to have someone who, who has the people skills to not just come in and bulldoze, bulldoze over everyone, but also look at things from a different perspective. And I, and, but not.
What?
So, I mean, I see both sides.
What about, uh, what about pay? Wouldn't he be taking a pay cut?
We have no idea. We have no idea.
Assistant director, fifty, he's got fifty employees.
I suppose it's public record. I suppose it's public record, but you have to take a little time.
Right? Got fifty employees.
But I think also, I mean, I've always operated with interviews that that's a decision for the, the candidates to make and not for us to project our thoughts or feelings onto them. And so my understanding is they know what the compensation package is looking like and they obviously agree to us, to come in front of us in a public meeting for an interview, so they must be serious. Is my take, again, from, but more of a private.
What'd you think of this guy, Bob?
Second?
Yeah.
I like the fact that if he didn't know, he said so.
Yeah.
Um, I think that he's someone who understands the challenges. I think that he gets it. I think that he, um, I think that he would just apply himself. I mean, I, I like some of the answers that I heard from him. I think he's just ve- very matter of fact and, and all business.
Yeah.
And hands on, boots on the ground.
Yeah, I, I think that he, I think that he's well aware of what he's getting into. And I know to Leah's point about knowing the salary, I, I think he's well aware of what he's getting into. Um, we chatted briefly and I told him about my first administrator job was leaving the city of Worcester myself, where you were very much a square peg in a square hole and went to an entirely different environment, so I can understand, I think, uh, a little bit of what his motivation is and what is, what his thoughts are, but, um, you know, you hear him say it is what it is. I think he gets it and I think that he'll apply himself and just do whatever it is that needs to be done.
What about Skip? He's probably closest to the DPW himself. Is this a decision we wanna make without his input? Yeah, but he can catch up, he can catch up through the, uh, the video, similar to what we did with the first go around when I wasn't here.
I think he's had a great relationship with, with Gary, right? It's been a long time. Um, but, you know, the three of us kind of all started vaguely at the same time. We hired Gary um, to replace an internal candidate, right, that had been internal, internal Rutland. Uh, and I, I don't know that he's ever given us the sense. I don't wanna speak for Skip, but I don't know that he, um.
This is.
I don't know that the process to him was anything other than, I can't believe we're here. You know what I mean? I, I don't know that he had that strong sense of we have to do this or we have to go in this direction.
I'm gonna go, just go back to the fact that we brought the two candidates in here from MRI, and I kind of feel like we owe it to them to make a timely decision. And again, not, not forcing it by any means, but, um, you know, I'm not sure why Skip's not here. You were able to call in and hear a good chunk of stuff or participate for, so, you know, I feel like.
So you wanna go forward with the decision?
I'm keen to, to move forward. And then, yeah, that's where I'm leaning.
We, we've interviewed, uh, internal candidates in the past, but they've always made the final cut. It's not, it's not something that we've, um, had professionals come in and look at and then reach beyond what they've done. Um, so, I am a huge proponent of, of bringing people up through the ranks, um, but at the same time, um, we hired people to do the job for us. They've done the job, and, and I, I would have to agree that it would, it would, if nothing else, it looks unprofessional to, um, to hire somebody, accept their work, and then reach out beyond it. Um, again, I'm not against hiring an internal candidate, but.
Well, their work does include bringing this candidate up to the top four.
But not the top two.
Not the top two.
So.
And.
Which we've eliminated one, for sure.
Um, I'll be honest, I don't know that I expected to be as excited about a candidate as I actually am about Joe Buckley. Um, you know, he looks good on paper. I, but that doesn't mean so much all the time, and I, I agree with Bob. I liked, I liked his answers pretty consistently. Um, and this background is hard to beat. Um, somebody with a degree in civil engineering and the amount of experience he has in an area that is such a struggle for us, um, and on a, and on a professional level. And I like the idea, you know, and, and this is one place where we probably need it. And again, I, I think I said it here, we have so many other departments where professionalization is coming slowly and we're adding professional staff and all that. DPW has been muddling through, and it was because of Gary for this whole time, losing staff despite growing town, the whole nine yards. To have somebody be able to come in from an organization as big as Worcester with the example of best practices, and that's not to say Worcester does everything perfectly, but with knowing the way things can be done, I, I think is just invaluable for us at this point. We just, we have some big-ticket items coming up, really, just.
So, do you?
If you're waiting for me to make a motion for the second guy, I don't have it in me. No, uh.
Cause I, I would like to make a motion that the board can move forward with, um, Joe Buckley.
I'm not stuck in a motion.
Any more comments? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I'm glad you made it unanimous, Jeff. I think that, that's important.
I know, it's not.
I mean, it's just trying to be reasonable to, so.
Okay, is there anything, uh, we didn't do public comments. Is there anyone here for public comment? No, okay.
Neil, you got nothing.
Oh, Neil, what are you doing here? Come on.
Can I have a, no, no. Can I have a, I have a motion for adjournment. Make the motion that the board adjourns. All in favor?
Aye.